Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our Tuesday night City Council meeting. It is, what is the date tonight?
Thirteenth.
Thank you. July, right? July thirteenth?
July thirteenth.
Yes, five o'clock, and we're ready to start our evening here. Welcome. We've got some esteemed guests here from El Dorado County Transportation. We have somebody from EID. We have our future attorney here. Mona, I don't have your last name right up here.
Ibrahim.
Ibrahim, thank you. And some lovely guests and interested parties here. And so, thank you, everybody, for coming, and we look forward to a quick meeting tonight. Should be nine or ten.
Don't say anything.
All right. So, we're going to go ahead and bring this meeting to order, and if you would please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Vice Mayor Taylor will be noted as absent. Mayor Thomas?
I am here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. First on our agenda is a proclamation from the City Council of the city of Placerville declaring August 3rd, which happens to be my birthday, August 3rd, 2021. Where did the chief go? There he is. All right. August 3rd, 2021, as National Night Out. And I have a proclamation here to read, and then we will present it to our chief, and he has some prepared comments, or unprepared comments. Whereas, the National Association of Town Watch, otherwise known as NATW, is sponsoring a unique nationwide Lights On campaign and celebration against crime, drug, and violence on August 3rd, 2021, entitled National Night Out. And whereas, the 38th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Placerville to join forces with 38 million people and over 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases in promoting cooperative police-community crime-prevention efforts. And whereas, the City Council plays a vital role in assisting the Placerville Police Department through joint crime-drug-violence prevention efforts in the city of Placerville and supporting, and is supporting National Night Out 2021 locally. And whereas, it is essential that all citizens of the city of Placerville be aware of the importance of crime-prevention programs and impact that participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Placerville. And whereas, police, community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and camaraderie are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Thomas, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Placerville, state of California, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, as National Night Out in the city of Placerville. And I urge all citizens of the city of Placerville to join the Placerville Police Department, the National Association of Town Watch, and their sponsors in supporting the 38th Annual National Night Out on August 3rd. And Chief Rinn.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I'll limit my speech to 45 minutes because I know we're pressed for time tonight. I think if we just added a couple more "whereas" in there, we'd take it to 45 minutes. National Night Out is a great event for the city of Placerville. Truly, every night in Placerville is a National Night Out because of the relationship that we like to foster with the community. We are more than your police department. We're your neighbors and friends, and we shop at the same stores and take our kids to the same schools. So, for us, truly, every night is a National Night Out. But it makes it even more special when we get to get together as a team, as a city team, not only just the police department, but visit neighborhoods and get to speak with neighbors who are concerned about issues that have arisen in their, you know, in their community, in their neighborhoods. So, thank you. I appreciate it. We look forward to doing it again this year, and you're with me, Mayor.
All right. And I don't want to jinx it, but we have been quite successful in winning awards on our National Nights Out throughout the country from...
We have, yes. Both in the state of California and nationally, we're usually first, second, or third. Last year, or year prior, I think we were second in the nation, third in the state, or something like that. So, yeah.
A big part of it is our community outreach and participation, and it's a great thing. I've been out and about on these nights before, and the neighborhoods that come out and the parties that are throwing, and it's a lot of fun for the neighborhoods.
It's awesome. We really do enjoy it on a personal level.
Dennis, while you're doing that, can I ask a question? I think this year is going to be a little bit different, and I was wondering if maybe we ought to say something about how, that we're not going to have our big celebrate, you know, in the, like, the park and stuff, that we ought to draw attention to that?
Sure. We traditionally, this event is, the success of it is dependent upon donations, and we didn't feel it was appropriate after last year to really hit up the businesses and different organizations for that money. We felt it was best used for people who were in need to direct those resources to them. So, we were planning on doing it more. Spoke with Ms. Davis, and she just doesn't feel comfortable with having guests at the site at this point. So, Plan B was really investing in the community. So, we won't do a kickoff event, which truly is just all of us getting together and then heading out to the different neighborhoods. So, this affords us the opportunity to actually spend more time with neighbors in the neighborhoods, talking to them. You know, I always, I always felt bad when I'd visit a neighborhood and they'd have these big spreads, and I can only be there five minutes.
I know. I agree.
This is going to give us the opportunity to actually spend more time in the neighborhoods and get to know people.
But we're not going to have the one at the park. We're not going to have the celebration up at a grocery outlet.
No, that's going to happen.
Oh, it is?
Grocery outlet's going to happen.
Oh, I heard it wasn't.
No, no. We talked to Greg, and he's gonna, he is going to do it.
Oh, okay. Well, then, I'm glad I asked.
Yeah. So, we'll be putting out an itinerary tomorrow that explains everything. This was kind of the start of the whole process. So, we're going to start flooding our social media airwaves with information where different parties are and where the community can come out if they don't have anything within their neighborhood.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. All right. Moving on, closed session report. And before you get started, this is going to be Attorney John Driscoll's last closed-session report. Now, we are, now, while we're not celebrating him this evening, we will have an opportunity in the future to remember his and to acknowledge all of his contributions to the city, which are vast and have gone over several decades. And I'm not going to begin to talk about them all because, well, we want to get...
You'll be out of here in no time.
We want to make the, yeah. But I just wanted to acknowledge that this is your last, last, last closed-session report and your last meeting here at the City Council, sitting up here on the dais. And just a little bit of appreciation for all your work, and we'll take care of all that later, but just a little acknowledgement of that. And we're going to, we're going to celebrate you a lot more in August at some point. So, thank you.
It's a little bit bittersweet.
Yes.
And normally, I would say, most of the time, council did not take reportable action tonight. Tonight, you did. And Councilmember, or Mayor Thomas was present, Councilmember Barelli, Councilmember No, Councilmember Saragosa, with Councilmember Taylor being absent. All the council members present unanimously rejected the claim of James Burkhalter, which they were considering in closed session.
All right. Thank you very much. Sean. All right. Moving on, adoption of our agenda.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
All right. Moving on, brief comments by, by City Council members. I'll start down with Jackie. Hey, Michael?
Really, no comment, well, just one comment. I just want to thank the community for really taking to heart no illegal fireworks in the area. I think it was one of the few years where I wasn't hearing fireworks all night, and maybe it was just my neighborhood, but I certainly am glad that Chief Cordero wasn't running around with a lot of big problems. So, thank you, community, for understanding the dire need of fire safety and not bringing those illegal fireworks into the community.
And Patty?
I don't have anything tonight.
All right. I got to go to a fashion show on Saturday.
Did you go?
I did. And my lovely wife was in the fashion show for Home Inspirations and for, what is their program? I lost it all of a sudden. Pardon me?
New Beginnings.
New Beginnings. Thank you so much. And I have to tell you, I have a newfound appreciation for that program and what they do for our community and spending a little bit of time and chatting with them and seeing what they do. One of, one of their most recent things that they've done for our community is they have voluntarily and without really any inspiration, we, they went out and helped clean up some of the homeless camps and piled up the stuff. Probably a good dumpster, a large dumpster full of garbage that they, they helped, and they work with them there. They, they know them a bit. They help people. One of the things that was really interesting is they help people out of homelessness, out of addiction, bringing people out of, that they're out of jail and making sure that they have a safe path and a, and a healthy path to getting back into the community. And they, and we have seen, some of their stories are changing generations of family, where you see now the kids that they have had, and they're moving forward in their lives. And it was, what they do is amazing. I feel honored to have the opportunity to contribute to that organization, and I would encourage anybody else out there to take a look at them and see because I think it's a worthwhile part of our community, and they're making a difference for families and mothers and kids. And it's just, it was a good thing. I just wanted to put that out there. So, thank you. And that's all I have to speak on tonight for brief comments from the, from City Council. And moving on, we are moving to receive and file an update on the US-50 Corridor Action Plan, currently known as Trip to Green, also known as Proof of Concept Project for the upcoming fall 2021 recreation season. And I'm going to turn this over for, to Ms. Neves.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and councilmembers. As council and the public may have heard, together with the El Dorado County Transportation Commission, EDCTC, and Caltrans, the city is proposing a pilot project, Proof of Concept, for temporarily extending the green phase of the three signalized intersections in the east-west directions on Highway 50, located at the intersections of Canal Street, Spring Street, Highway 49, and Bedford for two weekends in fall at the peak of fall tourism and recreation traffic. Substantial and decade-long efforts have been made to reduce congestion on Highway 50 and delay the signals in Placerville, starting as far back as the 1960s. Today, US-50 sees nearly 50,000 vehicles per day, and on peak holiday weekends, it's actually even higher than that. The source of this traffic is tied to our region's draw for agritourism, outdoor recreation, and general year-round activities that draw the public for all areas, from all areas, as far west as the Bay Area and surrounding communities throughout California and in Nevada. Once expected seasonal activities have now evolved into year-round activities in vacation travel to Lake Tahoe. Along with these year-round activities comes year-round traffic impacts and congestion. Local businesses in Placerville are also finding that travelers are not stopping as they once did when they arrived to town because the significant traffic delays have tested their patience as they pass through Placerville via the signalized intersections. Permanent improvements take time to plan, design, and fund. This prompted the city and its partner agencies to consider testing out a near-term, lower-cost solution to alleviate the congestion and improve transportation network in and around Placerville. The Proof of Concept Project will hold the signals in a green phase in the east-west directions for the extended duration. The desired effect will be to remove or significantly reduce weekend congestion on Highway 50, thus reducing off-highway bypass traffic through Placerville and result in congestion on local roads during peak weekends. The current proposal is to hold the signals in the green phase in the weekend, third weekends of September and October, beginning with setup early Friday morning between midnight and 1:00 a.m. on Friday morning, and with the signals turning to green by about 4:00 a.m., and then removing the traffic control devices and the trip to green by 10:00 p.m. that Sunday night. Cross-traffic will be restricted to emergency access only, and right-turn movements will be permitted on and off the highway at select locations, as they are now, with the exception of Canal Street. Staff's Report covers the detailed traffic management for each intersection, and it's been reviewed and considered by Caltrans, EDCTC, the city, and last but certainly not least, all forms of emergency services of our fine men and women in law enforcement, fire prevention, and medical assistance. Staff Report also provides the draft access control plan as vetted through the team. And although parts of it may be a bit busy to understand, it is available, and we could pull it up to be discussed in detail should council so desire. It's also attached to Staff's Report. Currently, the schedule, as I mentioned, is two approved weekends for the project, which are the third weekends in September, October, and they have the following dates for setup schedule. I refer to them as the teen weekends. They're the teen weekends. So, on September 17th, which is a Friday, as I mentioned, will be setting up around midnight 1:00 a.m. Signals will be trip to green by 4:00 a.m. on Friday morning, and Sunday will start taking down traffic management, starting at about 8:00 p.m., with signals resuming normal function around 10:00 p.m. On October 15th, which is the Friday, setup will again start around 1:00 a.m., signals trip to green around 4:00, and Sunday take-down on October 17th, starting at 8:00 p.m., and signals resume normal function at about 10:00 p.m. Friday night football games are anticipated for both September 17th and October 15th. An additional detour signage will be provided to direct visiting traffic and fans to the high school, considering Canal Street being closed at 50. At the suggestion of Placerville CHP, the Proof of Concept would utilize a soft-closure approach, which entails placing CHP vehicles at each of the north and south legs of the intersections at Spring Street and Bedford. Minimum clearance of 12-foot would be provided, as well as the use of steel barriers siding road clothes. This allows the clear message of closed access points, while still giving flexibility for greatest potential of unrestricted emergency access. We do have to consider the crosstown north-direction access for emergency services heading towards North County. To deliver this approach, the city is considering entering into a direct contract with CHP for traffic control services, as we've done before on the past and prior projects. For funding this project, on June 3rd, 2021, EDCTC approved and programmed $200,000 of coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations, or CRISA funding, as we've nicknamed it, for the project and implementation, as well as $71,080.66 for award of a concentrated public outreach effort, direct contract between EDCTC and AIM Consulting to deliver the project this fall. At the June CTC meeting, the programming of the CRISA funds, $271,080.66 in total, was approved, and we are now just awaiting for the final allocation letter confirming the placement of funds. On June 22nd, City Council adopted the capital improvement program budget, which included $25,000 for the said project as a good-faith investment on delivering the Proof of Concept. These funds will be used to cover staff time for project delivery. Staff anticipates returning to council at a later date to seek approval of the appropriation of the CRISA funds, along with traffic management, with a traffic-management contract. Public outreach will also span in the, to the Bay Area, Central Valley, Sacramento region, and will include messaging through Nixle and other formats to encourage Placerville residents to know other routes besides Highway 50 to get around town and to practice them prior to the Proof of Concept weekends. Public outreach, including official branding and messaging, is anticipated to start late July and ramp up in August. And in actuality, it's already started, so we're really excited about that. This evening, from EDCTC, we have Executive Director Mr. Woodrow Deloria and Senior Transportation Planner, Mr. Jerry Barton. These two fine gentlemen are who we have to thank for helping us secure the outside-funding source and spearheading this effort. First as our region's voice in the US-50 Hot Spot Study in 2019, then as our partner in the Placerville Focus Public Outreach in 2019 and 2020, that gave us the feedback from the public that this Proof of Concept pilot project could be a potential temporary solution for the community to consider. That concludes Staff's Report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or review the plans and detours as presented in the agenda item.
Thank you very much for that very thorough report there. Does, is there anybody that has questions right now? Will there be, will there be, one of the things, I know you guys, it's amazing the amount of participation that we have put together in terms of a team to look at this, to roundtable this project, and think of all the possibilities of what could happen in doing this. And it's, and as you start unfolding and you start looking at all the maps and the work that's gone into it and the consideration for all the different intersections and going out down Highway 49 and how to reroute that, it's quite a substantial undertaking. I thought, well, we just close off a few intersections, and we can see how it goes. What's the big deal? And I really appreciate EDCTC's efforts in, in really investing in a, in a public outreach. That is just, I think that's, that's, that's critical for our community to understand what we're doing so there's not a lot of people that are unaware. There'll, there'll be those, but in short order, they will figure it out. But, but I think, but EDCTC has gone above and beyond. They have recognized that the, that the need of the city and the, and the impact on our community of the traffic coming from a wide variety of events that occur east of here, whether it's agricultural tours, Apple Hill, winery, skiing, Tahoe, the National Forest, all of those have impacted our city, and they continue to grow in their impact. And it's becoming, I think you stated, it's not just the weekends now, it's the weekdays, too. And so, the impact on our city, and we have heard a lot about it, and the impact on our city is significant. So, hearing, having, actually having EDCTC hear us, respond, as well as the whole Board of Directors, which also includes most of the Board of Supervisors, as well as a few members from the City Council sit on that board, and they all have supported this. So, it's not just the city doing this. The county has supported this as well. So, I truly appreciate their, their participation and, and their support of our community because it truly is an impact that is impacting on the city. And, and even now, now that we're doing this and we're trying to clean, help move this traffic through Placerville, you know, Placerville's still taking it on the chin in terms of we have to reroute and go around and everything. We're hoping, the hope is that this is a better situation than having the traffic impact us. And, and that's what we're, that's what this Proof of Concept is, to see if what this is doing is really going to make that change for our community and allow us to live and exist in our community over the weekends when, you know, during those high-impact times, it's almost impossible to get across town. So, I appreciate all the effort that's going into this. Where I started off at the beginning was, is there going to be more speed control on Highway 50 coming through town? I, I just think that people are going to all of a sudden hit the gas pedal because they hear all the lights are going to be green, and they could just fly through. I just, curious, I'm just going to throw that in the back of your mind, and you can think about it as you go. But I really don't have a lot to add to this because you guys have done such an amazing job of contemplating all the potential eventualities that we may run into. Did you have something, Cleve?
I was just going to mention, on that topic, just remember, there will be a CHP officer at every intersection. Won't be there to follow people, but usually that tends to slow people down a little bit.
It does. Good, good point. Thank you. And at this point, did EDC, Woodrow, or did you have something to add to the conversation here?
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Mayor Thomas Woodrow Deloria, Eldorado County Transportation Commission. I don't have anything to add, but thank you for your partnership. I appreciate the gratitude, but really, it's a, it's a huge team effort. Rebecca's been, you know, has been spearheading a lot of it, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you to the commission and the council for, for the vision and the leadership on this. We are very hopeful that it's a success. It will, the success of this will be based in large part on the public outreach, and so, that's why we do have such a robust public outreach component. But again, thank you for the partnership, and we look forward to a success this fall.
All right. Thank you, Woodrow.
Yes. I'm just going to make a comment, and I want to thank Caltrans as well. I mean, Caltrans isn't known for an organization that, that takes on any type of pilot projects, really. So, the fact that District 3 was open to doing this, I think speaks volumes to, that they understand the problem for the city and for the county in this area as well, and knowing that the other options are both very long-term and very expensive. So, to at least see what this looks like, you know, I think is, I'll tip my hat to Caltrans as well because it's not an organization that takes on projects like this sort of willy-nilly. So, thank you, Caltrans.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council?
I just would, I have a question. And Mr. Deloria just said about determining the success, and I, I wonder, what is, how are you basing on what the success is? I mean, what, what are the...
That's a great question. So, the success would be received based on the feedback that we, we receive after the piloted effort's done. You know, we know what it's like when we don't do anything. So, let's take it out for a test spin, and let's see what it does when we simulate this Proof of Concept project of essentially removing the signals on Highway 50 and what that does for us in town. One of my favorite stories is, and Mr. Barton shares this one, that it's, it's very difficult to get to Home Depot on a Sunday. You know, if he's coming across town, and, and any of us, really, we've seen the backup on Broadway, on Main Street, you know, traffic is, it functions a lot like water, and when the hose isn't big enough, your spring leaks everywhere. So, so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to figure out a way to let the conduit or the water be a little bit bigger for traffic to pass through town and to see what that does for us for our local circulation. The other thing, too, that, you know, that's kind of sitting in the back of my mind for this is having an option to look at if we ever had to do any kind of evacuation here. You know, I mean, we couldn't wait for signals, you know, and I, we've all seen videos and documentaries about what happened with the campfire, and, you know, having that, that restriction lifted to be able to get people safely out of the area would be huge. So, that's something that we're considering looking at, too. But the public outreach effort, it is quite robust in terms of the amount of effort. It also includes surveys before, surveys after, and then, you know, kind of doing a summary report of, okay, well, how did we, how did we fare? What was the temperature check amongst the public on this pilot project? And much to Councilmember Saragosa's comments, he's right. I, I mean, my hat's off to Caltrans, especially, you know, the, the director and the deputy directors involved, and they really don't take on projects like this willy-nilly, and they are 100% partners with us in trying to find a solution because they see the issue, too, and, and want to, want to help our community through that.
Well, they've certainly listened to enough complaints for a zillion years.
Yes.
I think they'd like to shut us up, really.
They tried once.
Yeah.
One, one thing I, Rebecca or Woody, I'll ask you guys, I don't know how the surveys will work afterwards, but, and I know, I think it was either last year or the year before, you know, I purposely went into the traffic just to, to see how long it would take me to go from one end of town to the other. I think it was 26 minutes, you know, going down Broadway to Main Street, you know, as we got down. And, you know, the one thing that really stood out to me was, and Rebecca, you mentioned this in your comments, was there really wasn't a lot of people stopping. You know, the store parking lots weren't full, so it wasn't as if you were getting, you know, at least you could say, well, a lot of people are stopping, they're spending dollars here, there's, there's, you know, we're at least getting that component out of it for our businesses. I didn't see that. I mean, restaurants looked, didn't look very full, and this was a Sunday that I believe I did this. And so, to see, I mean, maybe to do some survey of the businesses, both, you know, up, upwards on Broadway, as well as not just downtown on Main Street, but, but on the other side of town, where I, I know myself, like, oh, I don't want to go to Tractor Supply right now because I'm going to get stuck for 26 minutes, and I don't want to cut through neighborhood, neighborhoods in order to get back to my house. So, you know, maybe that's something we could look at, just to see, you know, did they notice anything different? Was there an uptick, you know, in, in people shopping in their stores for folks that are both on Broadway, as well as, you know, people that are on, on Main Street?
I want to just add to that, Rebecca said earlier, you know, this is a really unique project. This is a very, very much out-of-the-box kind of a transportation project. You know, we typically build capital projects that solve, you know, safety problems, congestion problems, add capacity to the highways. This project's, the success of this project is going to be measured in two ways. You know, the, the quality of life improvements for the community of Placerville and the surrounding region, as well as the traditional kind of technical metrics that Caltrans is going to measure in reducing vehicle delay and congestion and all that, that, that may occur with the, with the green lights flushing traffic. Both of those outcomes are going to really help us move forward because if the community feels as though the quality of life was improved during those two weekends, and Caltrans sees that the, the traffic was improved with those technical metrics, that's how we're going to have that support and buy-in moving forward to continue doing something like this in the future. So, it really is unique, and we do have kind of two, two ways to measure the success of this project, which is not typical in any other transportation project that we deliver, so.
So, one of the things that, in speaking on this issue and talking to some people... So one of the things that, in speaking on this issue and talking to some people, is that the solutions that we may get from what we learned from this proof-of-concept might, would not necessarily look like this, what we're doing now, where it may, there's a lot of different things down the road that this is going to give us information to do, and it won't be necessarily this type of impact going forward. It could be, but it could be different. So there's, so this is a proof-of-concept, but then it opens up a whole nother dialogue on how do we move forward from here?
Correct. It simulates what has been proposed over the last three decades, and that is some form of a flyover or bypass or some large capital project, as Councilmember Sarah Gosa said, long-term, very high cost. But it will simulate to some degree that type of an improvement, but it'll also show that more kind of innovative ideas like this low-cost, high-impact solution of flushing traffic may be, may serve the near term until we have the funding available, the community support, and a design that ultimately everybody is in support of to move forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Woodrow. Is there anybody who'd like to have, would comment on this publicly? We'll open it up for public comment. Please step up to the podium.
I'm Ruth Michelson. I have a shop on Main Street, 352 Main, Placerville Art Gallery. Really appreciate that you're giving this a try. Thank you. It really does impact the merchants quite a bit when people divert from 50 and go down Main Street and it becomes a parking lot where no one can move. Doesn't help businesses, doesn't help us at all. So thank you for trying this. I just had a couple questions, sort of rhetoric, I guess, maybe Rebecca Neves could answer, but I'm not clear on the nexus between this and money that I think you said came from some type of COVID money. I'm not clear on that, maybe to help some of the businesses recover by having less gridlock downtown, but that was curious to me. The other thing, and this is kind of a broken record with me, but I did read the report, and I know there's a lot of traffic on 50 for many reasons, a lot of it, you know, going up to Tahoe, et cetera. But we cannot deny that when Apple Hill opens up, Apple Hill is just, takes it over the top to gridlock. I mean, the pattern is there, it's very clear, we don't have to survey people and ask them where they're going. We know it's during Apple Hill season. And what I've seen repeatedly is that, I saw Apple Hill growers, I think, mentioned once briefly in the report, but I didn't see them as a partner, and I think that we're bending way over backwards to help a group that has overbuilt, does not have the infrastructure, doesn't, as far as I know, contribute. And I don't understand why they don't take more responsibility and why they aren't brought in. I think in large part, in the fall, they've created this. It's a Disneyland up there, and I think it was irresponsible for them to grow as much as they have. I'm not per se against anyone in this county, but I think when you create something, you have to be a part of making a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Kathy Lishman, resident of Placerville. I thought there was going to be a presentation tonight with a PowerPoint presentation that would give me more information, but I did look at the map and it was a little confusing. I wondered about Highway 49. I'm kind of surprised that Caltrans is willing to cut off 49 from going to 49, and I would just love to hear a little more about where the people that come on 49 will be going to get to the other side of 49 to get that way, because we have 50 and we have 49. I'm also curious about the neighborhoods, and I would like to request that when this goes in, that the signs on certain neighborhoods, that people can't use those streets between 12 and 6 on Saturdays and Sundays, that you consider removing those signs, because every neighborhood is going to be impacted on the north side and possibly the south side. Also, I was on the City Council and the Transportation Commission when the Highway 50 improvement project went in. We asked and begged even before that that they could give us a better signal system. They told us that when we got the improvements, we would get what I heard called an intelligent signal system. I just don't understand why they gave us such a bad signal system that even if cars can get through the light at Bedford, they can't get through the light and it backs all the way up. So I still don't understand why Caltrans couldn't do something to improve the signal system. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. So I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at this time. And so I do know that there is going to be a lot of questions, not just tonight, but moving on into the future. And this is, we run a little bit of a risk kind of throwing this out there right now without the full-blown, the flow-blown marketing approach that we're looking at. This was kind of to start the conversation, and there will be a lot more information coming forward, and I do hope we can answer a couple of those questions right now and know that our marketing going forward and our community outreach is going to be quite significant. And so there'll be plenty of opportunities for that. So please, I think Woodrow's coming up, I'll let you two negotiate who's going to answer which ones there.
I'll defer to Rebecca.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to kind of refer to the plans that are provided, and we do have them available on PowerPoint, although I can't imagine that they're going to be all that much clearer here either. But we do have them in staff's reports here. We actually, the last two sheets are related to the northbound and southbound detours of Highway 49, and Ms. Lishman's comment is right on point. We were a little surprised ourselves that Caltrans was so willing to divert the Highway 49 traffic as they did, but they actually were a great partner in figuring out how we were going to do the detour. And, you know, the detour on a map, it may look like it's kind of a big deal, but it's only about a three-mile detour, which sounds a lot, you know, but it's not really, considering that we're 5.48 square miles. So it does convey traffic in the northbound direction, it does convey them on Lower Main Street, crossing under Highway 50 at Placerville Drive, and then turning right on either Cold Springs or Perrose, and then continuing up to Kimbellic, then to make a left onto Highway 49 there. And then the southbound direction is much the same kind of detour where they come through, I think it's like Page 6 and 7 of the PDF. Sorry. But yeah, so they come through the same route, they come, you know, southbound direction on Highway 49, they, yeah, a couple more, there you go, right there. Perfect. Thank you. So, you know, you can kind of see there on the upper middle portion of the screen, as they're heading south on Highway 49, they would then make a right onto Kimbellic and then come down Middletown and ultimately connect up with Perrose. They can either make a left onto Cold Springs, or they can continue onto Perrose and then follow and make a left onto Placerville Drive that will then route them on Lower Main. We didn't identify Cold Springs as necessarily the direct detour route, although that's certainly a shorter shortcut. And the reason for that is, that is such a hard left turn for semi-trucks. So that was one thing that we considered when we were looking at doing Highway 49, but that doesn't mean that people can't take that route, it's going to be an available route for them. And then, any other questions, council, which is need answered?
I think the nexus to the funding with the CHRISAA funding?
I got that one.
Okay.
So, thank you again, Mayor Thomas. The CHRISAA funding was stimulus money for COVID relief that flowed through, came from the federal government, it flowed through the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, an existing transportation funding program, and it was intended to be used for transportation investments that are typical of what the commission typically programs. So this wasn't stimulus money that was intended for business support or other purposes, it was specifically earmarked for, I shouldn't say earmarked, it's not earmarked, identified for transportation investments. So that's why this CHRISAA funding was programmed to this project. And the other question was regarding the signals, upgrading the signals, and it has been a long time coming, but Caltrans, just this fall, will be bringing fiber optic cable. They have proprietary fiber that they rely on for those signals to be connected to their transportation management center, which is in Rancho Cordova, and it will happen this fall, so those signals will be optimized and connected to the management center and can then be changed in real time, because there will be cameras that will show the operators in Rancho Cordova if things need to change.
Thank you. And thank you, Rebecca. And with, I truly appreciate the effort and work you all have put into this, and look forward to our community outreach. I'm sure we'll be talking about this in our August meeting as well. I think we'll be heading in that direction in terms of the public outreach at that time. So with that, we're going to express our appreciation for Woodrow and Jerry for making the trip down here tonight, and wish you guys a good evening, unless you want to stick around. And with that, we're going to move on to item number seven, our consent calendar. And all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of resolutions will be waived unless a councilman requests otherwise. And with that, we have one resolution that when somebody moves this, we need to amend, and that is, I'll let Dave tell us what we're doing there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, the two items, 7.11 and 712, both those items are predicated on a tentative agreement with Local 39, one of your unions, and that tentative agreement was approved on May 25th. It was made through mediation, and there's a clause in that TA that states that the 2% COLA begins July 1st. However, it also speaks to the first full pay period, which is a different date, it's July 10th. In speaking with the union, they contend it was July 1st, so we're recommending that you approve or revise those resolutions to reflect a July 1st date for the 2% COLA for both 7.11 and 712.
All right, thank you.
I'll move the consent calendar with the items on 7.11 and 712, moving that to the July 1st date.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. We got a first and a second. Let's go ahead and open this for public comment at this time. I saw that, Mona. Would anybody like to comment on any items on the consent calendar at this time? All right, seeing no comments, we'll bring it back to the council for any further discussion or roll call vote. Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Sarah Gosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Now, moving on to item number eight, which, we're just about 15 minutes early than normal, so we made, we made an executive, I made an executive decision to go ahead and not keep public comment at 6 o'clock certain, because it didn't work very well for us. Just to put it plainly, I think it caused more confusion and challenges in our community and people wishing to speak than otherwise, and so we went ahead and removed that, and we're going to, you know, we'll try and be judicious on how we place it on the calendar, on the agenda. However, we're not going to make it a time certain any longer. So with that, public comment on non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the City Council. State law prohibits the City Council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the City Council under very specific circumstances. I reserve the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make any personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. With that, well, I'd like to open up the mic for public comment at this time.
Good evening, council members. I was here last week and wanted to clarify a statement I made, I've gotten a lot of feedback and a lot of flack for it, about the 20% comment. I was asked by one of the council members, what percentage of the homeless we feel would move to a managed campground? And I said 20%, and they were going, oh, only 20. That's a basic number that I think it could be documented, it's a fair number. When you ask 100 campers, we have a camp, will you move? 20% will say, I'll move tomorrow. The rest of them are going to say, what's it about? Who's running it? Who's managing it? What's included? How's it structured? What are the requirements? Or where's the bar at? And then a lot of them are going to sit back and just see what happens. I believe that with the right organization running that program, with the right structure and policies, that that number can hit 50, 60, maybe 70%. There's going to be a certain percentage, 25 or 30%, that won't engage willingly, but I just don't, I don't want that number, that 20% number, to panic everybody and say, well, we're going to do all this work for only 20%. I think we'll have a much higher engagement of that if the right organizations are working with law enforcement, with the city, with the county, to provide a safe place for them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. If you could, please state your name for the record when you come up as well, appreciate it.
It's amazing, I was in Boise, Idaho this weekend, and I didn't even think about Martin Boise. It's amazing to hear that the council and the police department and the mayor are aware of the September 2019 federal court decision that we cannot move the homeless from their camps, whether it be five camps or 22 camps or 122 camps, on private, on public property unless we have a shelter for them. So I'm here to just commend you all for the courage that brought forth this paper yesterday of California's oldest newspaper, and the headline reads, "City Council: Managed Homeless Camps Are The Best Option." The article was not only favorable, but very, I believe, endearing to the 189,000 or so in Eldorado County. I appreciated Councilwoman No's thoughtfulness to say, we really need more than one camp, considering the acreage of the county, albeit most of the homeless, 80% of the homeless, according to the point-in-time count, are Western slope. The comment was made from the council last week that we realize that we're 15 or 20 years behind on this issue. That was a brave statement, but it's an accurate statement. For there to have been no council, rather, no homeless shelter for the last decade, and for the churches to try to shelter the 80% of the homeless, the 500 county homeless would be 480%, and 80% of that, somewhere between 3 and 400 homeless on the Western slope. The Tahoe Coalition has somehow acquired three motels for the homeless in Tahoe, and yet the county has acquired none. And so you're leading the way. It takes courage to lead on something. I've been coming here for two years, almost every meeting, as well as to the supervisors. Somebody has got to lead. Louis Braille was almost permanently blind, and yet he invented the Braille system. He taught at the Paris School for the Blind. He had his new system, but those who were stuck in the mud refused to let him teach his Braille system at the Paris School for the Blind, because they were looking in the rearview mirror instead of what would work to show compassion and help those that are blind and cannot even see.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Louis Braille told them, you will be known in history as those that refused the system or were willing to move with the future. Thank you for the courage. God bless you all. Move ahead and move the county with you. God bless you.
Heidi Meyerhofer, business owner, property owner on Main Street, county resident. I'm here, Mayor Thomas, I wanted to thank you for acknowledging the fine work of the New Beginnings. New Beginnings, their store and their mission and their store on Main Street. I'm happy you had a great time at the, at the fashion show. They truly do God's work. They do, they transform lives and they are, they make our community better. So thank you for acknowledging that. And I just wanted to share with you that I learned recently that a truck that they had recently purchased that was going to move them into the next level of care and profitability was stolen this weekend from their site. So they had raised $11,000 to buy this truck, and it was stolen off of their property. So if anybody can find it in their hearts to send them some love that way, they do, they do amazing work. And that truck was going to really propel them. So anyway, just thought I'd share that here, and thank you for acknowledging them.
Thank you for sharing that.
Good evening. Ruth Michelson again. One thing I wanted to mention, which is more of a procedural thing, when you made the decision to change this meeting from six to five, if I recall correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have a perfect memory, but I thought one of the compromises was that public comment would not start until six o'clock, being that people work and they commute and they can't get here until six. And there was a lot of people who were against the early start, but I thought the promise was made, it wouldn't start till six o'clock. And I understand your problems with the time certain and all of that, so six o'clock or after. But anyway, you can review what promises you made back then and make the decision. Because I think for good governance, you need to have as much involvement as possible. Now, speaking of good governance, you've made a change with this meeting that you no longer accept written communication. So that means that without Zoom, without calling in, and by the way, the Board of Supervisors has kept Zoom and kept the calling in, but you don't have that. You will not take written communication that does not have to do with the agenda. You'll only take written communication that has to do with agenda items. And so therefore, the only way for people to communicate with you is to show up in person. And now, they may not make it in time because you're starting early. So thoughts, just that I have. And whatever time I have left to as the timekeeper, how much time do I have?
About a minute and a half.
I can't even see that.
I'll let you know.
Okay. So I had written a letter that I had hoped would be in the written correspondence tonight, and it wasn't. But all of you received it, and Councilmember, the one who isn't here was...
Taylor.
Kara, Taylor, thank you, was kind enough to respond to me. And I'm just going to paraphrase it because actually it was something that I had wanted the public to see and know about. And now they won't because you don't accept written communication that's not on the agenda and had to do with how you handled the formula situation at your last meeting. I was disappointed by that and have to go quickly. It just basically said, I asked you to all have a vision for what you wanted this town to be. Basically, you've heard it many, many times before, anytime, any town USA or something unique, historic, something that we're protecting. And there is one thing floating around town that I think is sort of damaging, and it comes from the higher levels, not naming names, but that if we have formula restriction in our town, then the value of our buildings will go down and we will not be able to get as much rent if we're renting out our buildings. I think this is false. I think it's, I don't appreciate it being shared by higher level people who are influential. We have something valuable in our historic town. If we dilute that, that's something that could potentially make the sale of buildings go down and rents go down. I mean, look, none of us have a crystal ball and know exactly. We have a very vibrant downtown. We don't have any problem renting out spaces or selling buildings. When they go on the market, they sell quickly if they're priced right, if they're priced right. And if they're up for rent, we have people in line to rent them out. So let's not do the scare tactic.
Thank you. Thank you, Ruth.
Good evening again. Before you start the timer, I just want to ask John Driscoll what he's going to do twice a month on Tuesday nights now.
I'll watch the All-Star game next year.
Lots of things. You're, when you're going to honor John, it's going to be public?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll be back. I have been involved in Placerville politics for 35 years. First as a member of the General Plan Committee for two years, then serving on the city council for 16 years, and now as a citizen and an observer. I know that this last year has been challenging, but it seems at this time as if this community and the council are missing a shared vision. Now that meetings are in person, it's time to rethink how to involve the public in more meaningful ways. I know the formula business issue in downtown was delegated to the Economic Development Committee, a committee that meets once a month on a Friday at noon. Not very convenient for the public. The fact that the committee, along with the Planning Commission, have already voted that they don't approve it seems kind of inappropriate for me that it would go to that committee. The formula business, as well as other issues, need to involve the public more meaningfully. I'd like to read a little from this book, "Balancing Nature and Commerce in Gateway Communities." If nothing else, a community needs to agree on a shared vision of what it wants to become. Creating a shared vision is important because it provides a blueprint for the future of the community. Without a blueprint, nothing will happen. For the process to work, community leaders must forego the conventional closed decision-making process in which a government commissioner panel listens to an array of speakers and special interests and then makes an objective decision about the community's future. Instead, the community leaders need to invest in a different process, one that delegates responsibility for decisions to partnerships that involve individual citizens in the community. Authentic public involvement in a visioning process takes more than just arranging a few meetings. It requires a firm commitment to inform, involve, and educate the public. The first phase would be identifying the values and assets of the community, then articulate their, let people articulate their preferred, preferred vision for the community's future. What do they want their community to look like in five, 10, or 20 years? What kind of change is desirable? What kind of change is not desirable? Successful gateway communities, which we are, craft economic and community development processes around their distinctive assets. Assets provide people a sense of place. Distinctive assets enhance quality of life and thus can translate into economic vitality because of their power to attract and retain businesses, residents, and tourists. Distinctive assets provide a focal point to generate political support and excitement for initiatives to protect what residents value. And I would like to say that the downtown revitalization plan that I was involved was a perfect example of involving the public in a meaningful way. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to come up for public comment? All right. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close public comment at this time. There was a few clarifications that I think are important to be, to be shared here. Normally, I'd like to refer people to our staff, but one of the ones was related to no longer accepting written communication. And that seems to be slightly, well, that's not what we're doing. But, but we do have a different process now. So could, would you share that with us? Slightly different, not much different.
Well, the difference is, the only difference is that we do not accept written public comments that are on non-agenda items and place those on the agenda. We still receive those and we send those to the council, so the council receives those, but they do not go to the public on our agenda. Now, if the council feels that those are something that need to be brought out publicly, they can bring it up at the meeting or request that a future agenda item be set regarding that item. But you are, they're correct in the fact that we don't accept just general public comments in writing for, prior to our agenda.
All right. And we do receive, we receive at times a plethora of emails, and sometimes they're very poignant and important here. And we truly, and I truly appreciate all the emails I receive and the information that's in them. And so I just want to make sure that there was some clarity on that. Kathy, I want to talk to you later about that, Kathy. That's an interesting book. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and move on. Was there any other questions or anything, clarifications? Nope. Seeing none? Okay, good. With that, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number nine, item pulled from the consent calendar, which we had none. And ordinances, we have none, so we're moving on to public hearing. So this is a hearing, item number 11.1. And this is a hearing to consider an appeal filed by Julie Robinson of the Planning Commission's June 15, 2021 approval of the conditional use permit 20-01, and then reverse the decision of the Planning Commission and deny approval of CUP 2101, same one, to allow a bed and breakfast establishment at 795 Chamberlain Street, upholding the appeal. And so before I turn this over to Pierre, I am going to kind of lay out a little bit about how this is going to work. We're going to receive the staff comment first, and then, and then we'll have any discussions between the council and staff with any questions and follow-up. And then we're going to allow the appellant to share, state their case, and then we'll allow the applicant to respond and share their, their comments regarding. And then we'll, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, and we'll go from there. Just wanted to kind of lay it out so everybody knew what we were doing. The last time we did this, I don't think I did a really good job of it. So we haven't done this often, so I wanted to make sure that we kind of cleared up the process a little bit so everybody kind of had an idea of what we're doing. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Pierre Rivas.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. To give a little background, a conditional use permit application to operate a bed and breakfast establishment known as Verosa Cottage at the address of 795 Chamberlain was considered and conditionally approved on June 15th of this year by the Planning Commission. Following that approval, an appeal was filed on June 21st by the appellant, Julie Robinson, requesting city council to consider that approval and requesting that the approval be overturned. Just to give a little brief history on the ordinance, the bed and breakfast ordinance was adopted by the city council back in November 24th of 1981, which then included the current 16 criteria and conditions that are in the present ordinance. The primary purpose of the ordinance, as stated originally, was to provide conditions and regulations for the protection, enhancement, and perpetuation of old and historic buildings in historic districts of the city and the perpetuation of historic type architecture within historic districts, which has been special historical and aesthetic interest and value. So originally, the B&amp;B ordinance only applied to homes that were within an historic district, but was later adopted to apply to an historic home citywide. The city's notice of that ordinance stated that historically, bed and breakfast establishments have been private homes, ranging in size from stately Victorian townhouses to rustic country cottages whose owners turn over their spare bedrooms into paying guests and include next day's morning meal in the price for the room. So in regard to the appeal and then staff's analysis, this appeal is based on the appellant's conditions, which I paraphrase in your staff report, that is italicized and follows by staff's response, and I'll go over there, I'll go over them now. The first item is loss of housing stock and long-term rental housing by allowing a house in a residential neighborhood to be used for tourist accommodations only with no full-time persons living in the residence. So staff's response is, "The applicant submitted an application for a bed and breakfast establishment, which is permitted by conditional use permit within a residential zone pursuant to City Code Section 10-4-11." Staff did provide you a list of the criteria as attachment four in your staff report, those items one through 16, for your quick reference. This section codifies specific criteria and conditions which must be met. As codified criterion conditions, these cannot be modified except through an amendment to the zoning ordinance, although they are subject to interpretation by the city. Specifically, subsection 10-4-11(c)(8) states that, "The proprietor or owner are required to occupy the property." The applicant stated at the public hearing that no one lives on the premises and that she, the applicant, would stay on the premises when guests are staying in the home. In order to qualify as a bed and breakfast, the owner must live on the premises. Otherwise, the use being sought is actually a short-term vacation rental, which is not a permitted use in a residential zone. In addition, the single-family residence would be removed as housing inventory for either rental or owner-occupied housing. It is staff's interpretation that this condition requires that the owner must live on the property as their principal residence. This is a longstanding requirement, as the two existing B&amp;Bs operating, such as the Seasons and the Glen Mori House, comply with this condition, as have numerous other bed and breakfasts in the past, such as the Kembelik Blair House, the Chichester House, Safsky House, to name a few. The city has a severe housing shortage for its working residents, which is worsening, especially, which is termed the missing middle housing. Second contention from the appellant, that the granting of the condition, conditional use permit sets a precedence and grants a special privilege by allowing the use to meet its parking requirements by utilizing parking on the street, on a city-maintained street. Staff's response is that City Code Section 10-4-4(c)(8) states that, "Any parking stalls or asiles that are to be located in the public right-of-way shall be approved or conditionally approved by the Planning Commission and obtain an encroachment permit. Therefore, should the city grant the use of a parking stall within the public right-of-way, it would not be a grant of special privilege, but as a use, it may be allowed under a conditional use permit. Typically, the term granting of special privilege is a term used and a finding to be made by the decision-makers in the granting of a variance from a zoning district development standards. This is a use allowed by conditional use permit, which would then require a finding that such a use is not detrimental to surrounding properties." So in this case, detrimental to parking on, on the subject street. I would just add one more item personally. I was surprised to see such a provision, as staff was, was not aware of the granting of street, city street right-of-way for private use. The third contention, contention by the appellant, on May 11th, 2021, the city council directed staff to bring back a draft ordinance to allow and regulate short-term rentals in certain zone districts. The applicant should be required to wait until such time as a short-term rental ordinance is established. On May 6th of this year, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution that modified the list of special use permits that may be administratively issued for short-term rentals that would include the Highway Commercial Zone District. This action was subsequently appealed to the city council. The council then reversed the decision of the Planning Commission, denying approval of that resolution and rescinded it, upholding the appeal of the appellant. The council further directed staff to bring back an ordinance to allow and regulate short-term rentals in certain zone districts. Since it appears that the application is for a short-term rental and not a bona fide bed and breakfast, establishment, the establishment has permitted pursuant to City Code, the use of a single-family residence for a short-term rental cannot presently be permitted and would be a violation of the city's current zoning ordinance. So some additional staff comments beyond the appeal. Staff would like to provide a comment in defense of the Planning Commission's action. It was staff, and then the commission, based on the staff's report and staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission to approve the request, that we made the assumption that the applicant did live on or intended to live on the premises, subject to the application. The mailing address given in the application was 795 Chamberlain Street. Although the applicant had stated that she, the owner, would not be living on the premises, should she decide to reside thereon, the bed and breakfast could then be permitted to operate, subject to all the remaining conditions of approval. Regarding the ownership of the property, which is a limited liability corporation, from staff's perspective, the occupancy of the house, if the applicant... from staff's perspective, the occupancy of the house, if the applicant is the LLC or part-owner and she lives on the premises, there then would be no loss of a long-term rental or owner-occupied unit. Although concern, or should I say more vague criteria under the City Code, and this is subsection c10, states that meals shall be served only to residents and overnight guests, the provision of providing breakfast to guests appears to be not required. So in closing, the operation of a short-term rental within the city of Placerville is not permitted presently, except under a special temporary use permit within the central business district. The Development Services Department takes enforcement action against any unauthorized short-term rentals brought to our attention. Typically, staff becomes aware of these through complaints. However, when time permits, staff can search for advertisements on vacation rentals, on vacation rental platforms on the internet. Staff currently has three open cases and is aware of eight new cases yet to be opened concerning short-term rentals in residential zones. So with that, staff is recommending that the council reverse the decision of the Planning Commission, denying approval of conditional use permit 21-01 to allow a bed and breakfast establishment at 795 Chamberlain Street, upholding the appeal, based on the finding that the proposed bed and breakfast establishment does not meet the criteria and conditions established pursuant to City Code Section 10-4-11(c), and that the proposed use is actually a short-term rental and is not permitted within the residential zone district. There appears to be an uptick in the applications for bed and breakfast as a means of getting a short-term rental approved. Staff is also facing an increase in the number of illegal short-term rentals within the city, commensurate with a housing shortage and subsequent increase in housing costs and increase in rents. As such, the council may want to consider directing staff to come back to council with an urgency ordinance placing a moratorium on future bed and breakfast applications until the city completes the short-term rental ordinance. With that ordinance, staff may also bring forward modifications to bed and breakfast ordinance criteria to more clearly differentiate what is and what is not a bed and breakfast versus what is and what is not a short-term rental. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Pierre. Any questions at this time from council? Michael? All right. Hearing, seeing no questions, I have none at this point. I'm interested in hearing from the...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Please do.
If I might interrupt for a minute. I want to point out that the council did receive a written comment on this agenda item. The written comment was from Councilmember Taylor, who is not at the meeting tonight. It is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that other than to acknowledge receipt of that email, the council has not responded to that email in any substantive manner or way whatsoever. This item is being, this email or this communication is being considered as public comment with respect to this item.
All right. Thank you. And that is available if anybody would like this.
Yeah, shouldn't matter. We have that available for anybody would like to see it.
All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing? Or did we already open the public hearing? I'm not sure. Okay, okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And we'd like to hear from the, from the appellant first. So if you, about 10 minutes at maximum, if you finish up early, that's great too. Just go ahead and take your time, because we want to make sure you have a full opportunity to share everything that you have there. Oops, sorry, that's me.
Hi, everyone. I'm Julie Robinson. So to be frank, I stayed at an Airbnb this weekend in Myers, and about 20 of us got together to fish and to kayak and to catch up. So this issue is so complicated, and I surely don't have all the answers. But I do feel it's important to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to ensure fairness and to ask the Planning Commission to honor the decisions to wait for a citywide VHR ordinance made by the council. I respect both the business owners in these last two VHR applications. I really apologize if it feels personal. I promise it's not. I understand your desire to make money, and shelter isn't necessary for survival. I know of at least two long-term, longtime Eldorado County couples who are about to have their first babies and are struggling to find a home despite both working full-time. Here are the key findings from the Eldorado County 2021 Affordable Housing Needs Report produced by the California Housing Partnership. In Eldorado County, 90% of extremely low-income households are paying more than half of their income on housing compared to just 4% of moderate-income households. 3,920 low-income renter households in Eldorado County do not have access to an affordable home. Renters in Eldorado County need to earn $28 per hour, two times the state minimum wage, to afford the average monthly asking rent of $1,470. Vital workers doing home health, personal care aides, childcare providers, retail salespersons, janitors, cleaners, medical assistants earn between $14 to $23 an hour and therefore cannot afford these rents. We need to be vigilant and aware what we're choosing when, as a city, we decide to open up the city for the vacation home rental market. As an example, I asked you to consider some data I discovered about Fresno, California. Interestingly, Fresno has the second-highest Airbnb growth in the nation at 119%, according to a Fidelity investment site, behind, I think, Charlotte, North Carolina. And Fresno is facing an unprecedented housing shortage, causing rents and homelessness to spike. According to the B, average rents have increased over 35% over the last four years, the highest increase in the country. And between 2019 and 2020, the number of homeless individuals has increased by over 1,000 within Fresno's city limits alone. My other problem with Airbnbs is they change the fabric of the community. You no longer have neighbors. This weekend, I spoke with the people who owned the homes on either side of the Airbnb that we stayed in, and they said they'd seen constant partying, they'd seen events where there were more than 50 people in the house, they'd been woken up to vigorous vomiting over there, over the balcony, that they'd woken up to people frolicking on their lawns. And the one lady said she felt like people just seemed to forget to be humans when, forget to be good neighbors. Placerville needs to be strategic in facing the homelessness crisis, the wildfire and the climate change crisis. These novel challenges require humanistic, out-of-the-box thinking versus relying only on capitalistic market forces. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie, for your comments there and sharing your appeal. Next, we're going to, the applicant will, and again, we want to make sure you have enough time to, you know, say everything you want to say, so please do make sure you share with us everything you have there. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Slater, good evening, Mayor Thomas and council members. I'm going to read just from the notes of, so I stay on topic here. I appreciate this whole process, and in this learning process of how this all went, I want to start with the first comment, and I don't take it personally, this has been a fascinating journey. And to start off with, the first quote is, "Allowing businesses and people who do not live in Placerville to buy our historic homes and use them to accommodate tourists reduces the amount of long-term rental housing and homes available to purchase for the people that do work in Placerville." And I just want to make a couple of comments on this. I've lived in Placerville for almost seven years, over six years, and I spent, and I've commuted the first two years here, and I do all my work from here. So any misunderstanding from that element from last week, or last month? I purchased both 795 and 791 Chamberlain in the same week, and ironically, as I watched this whole thing come full circle, the reason I purchased those two properties is because it started off with the question, "What will I do if my mother and my sister end up homeless?" And I won't go into details about why that was even in a question, but it's a very real question that I was considering that moved me to make my first investment I'd ever made. I'd never purchased real estate on my own, and because I fell in love and still am in love with Placerville, it was the first place that I decided to buy two homes, here. And part of that was, I was excited to, and still am excited and continue to invest in the city, the place that I now call home, my favorite place I've ever lived, and it was also so one day I could accommodate my mother and sister, who may need to move here at some point for more care. As far as the comment or the quote, "The loss of available housing stock displacing long-term residents and increasing our homeless population," I do not see my home as a city stock. As far as I see on the city records and from longtime neighbors, what I'll call 795, which is Verosa Cottage, and next door at 791, I'll call the bungalow, just to simplify. Verosa Cottage was primarily owner-occupied, as far as I can see, and it definitely was owner-occupied when I purchased it from Anna Garmendi in 2018. No renter was displaced and no one was made homeless in that purchase. As far as the bungalow, which is the home that I purchased next door, it was empty and completely dilapidated when I purchased it. After completely renovating it, I rented it by conscious choice, my decision, that I have a right to, at far-under-market value to a senior couple, and they've been living there for several years, very happily, and I'm happy to have them there. It's not my responsibility to donate my asset to the city's stock or reduce my rent. But that couple is lovely, and I knew they would take impeccable care of my investment. I chose to make the bungalow a long-term rental until I knew more of what my sister and my mother would need over the years. It was a bonus to this decision to protect my asset, and it felt wonderful as a benefit to that decision to contribute to the community by providing a beautiful, perfectly remodeled home to this senior couple at a low rent. That was my choice. As far as my decision to rent one house and not the other, it was because Verosa Cottage is one of my homes. I have the right and the blessing to own a couple homes. I completely furnish it as my home, it is my home. I did say I would stay there, that was my commitment to stay there when someone was It doesn't mean I still don't call it my home. It's there for my use, completely furnished for my pleasure, for my family, for my friends, it's for me. It is not for rent, and I have no plans to rent it out to anyone long-term, so it's not lost stock. The other reason I requested this conditional use permit is because it seemed clear that Verosa was of historic significance, and I provided what I thought was incredibly charming and beautiful story that is attached to it with the research. And it seemed clear, based on that information, that the documentation and the photo of the original Charles, of the Verosas, was provided with that application. After renovating both the bungalow and the Verosa Cottage, although I was proud of the results of how both renovations improved the street for all residents, the bungalow in no way is remarkable in story, architecture, or history. That's why I decided to turn it into a long-term rental until I decided on my family's needs. When Ms. Robinson referred to the Verosa and noted to only accommodate tourists, in my opinion, it seems to underestimate the importance of encouraging tourism in terms of our economic vibrancy. I believe that being part of the economic power of tourism does benefit our long-term residents, including those in need in our community, with the dollars visiting spent here, occupancy taxes paid, et cetera. And the irony is, in these purchase of these two homes, I not only chose to provide long-term housing below, far below market value in one house, and in hopes of not only providing but participating and contributing to the economic vitality by bringing tourism in a historic cottage. Two exact situations right next to each other, my choice, my contribution, and my participation in that vitality. So it's just ironic how it's come full circle, door to door. The Verosa, because of the documented history, architecture, features, and the charm, is different from normal rental stock, and I believe it does represent the city in a way that could make the residents proud. The direct neighbors, who are noted in my hearing narrative, and even a neighbor I don't know, emailed in and stated that they agree. I submitted the application for Verosa to be considered a historic and historic B and B because that seemed to fit the description to the question, "Why this house?" It has a wonderful story, there's so many fun rumors that people around town tell me. I did not see the house next door, the bungalow, as unique, special in any way to any other house in this beautiful city. Albeit proudly renovated, it's just a regular small house built a long time ago, perfect for a long-term rental. One of the things I failed to speak about when it was discussed in my not understanding, was how the owner proprietor would share the small living quarters. There's a lovely 700-square-foot studio below the cottage for me, the owner-operator, when there are guests in the cottage. This was a key element that I considered when I purchased it, as I was envisioning my sister would someday create an income in this historic cottage and no longer rely on government care. And also, I could have had, I did that so I'd have the option of a more permanent basis as I retire from other careers. I did refer to my successful track record of managing our other homes when we rent them via VRBO and having five stars consistently, with absolutely no damage or complaints. I only meant this as a reference point to assure the city. I've heard stories from residents, all different, many different residents, and it was to address the rumor that if I can run, heard bottle rockets, I heard not enough low-income housing. And I was saying that, I only mentioned that to say, five stars consistently, zero damage. We have, I have an extraordinarily stringent intake process, there's never parties, there's never maximum, everybody shows driver's license, they all have to be a minimum age, there's so much, they have to sign off huge deposits. Not once in three years have we had an incident at any of our homes. I provided the site plan to show that the parking in the front, I provided the site plan to show the parking in front of the front door and the picket entrance gate. To be candid, getting a designated parking spot was not ever the desired goal. It was just one of the possible offers if the neighboring parking at my house, next door at the bungalow, was not considered. There appeared to be room in the code for that option, to park that extra third car at the property next door that I own, and to be considered and discussed. There's only one bed in each of the two bedrooms at the cottage at Verosa, and so the maximum of two couples allowed to stay at any time. And they had to be together, one group, not two separate couples. That is where the three required parking spots came from. What I didn't, what was discussed last time, that I also didn't mention in my naivety of the process, there was a discussion, well, what if the applicant ever sold the bungalow? Then what would we do? And there's no intention of that either. If that were ever to happen, I understand it would immediately affect the permit at the Verosa, and it would no longer meet the requirements of the conditional use. In the years that I have owned the Verosa, I can only remember two times that I pulled up and someone was parked in front of the picket gate in front of my front door. And that was, one was to ladies' night, and the other was another event on Main Street. It was a non-issue for me, and it felt great to see the city prosper. With those understandable exceptions, I believe that people don't need to have a sign to avoid parking right in front of someone's front door or their entrance gate. This is what consideration does without laws and rules. As mentioned, the direct neighbors are all accustomed to living in the city and to our specific parking availability on Chamberlain, and they still endorsed this historic B and B. There's always been a way to come and go on Chamberlain, and it's worked with each home and as the guests have parked and visited over decades. And I am very grateful for this process, because regardless of how it turns out, I love what I did and I knew that it was ironic that I had both situations going, and I am just, I'm fascinated how the full circle, that it started with my question about homelessness in my own family and what I could do about it, and it's coming full circle to be about that plus the B and B. So thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity and that Ms. Robinson gave me the opportunity to be more clear on my purpose and more clear in this process, because this has been incredibly educational for me. So thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. At this point, if Mrs. Robinson would like to come up and have any comments regarding hers, you're welcome to at this time, or we'll move to, move on. All right, seeing none? All right, thank you very much. At this point, we're going to go ahead, we have, we're going to open up public comment in just a second. We have received two letters in comments to this. We have received two letters in comments to this, to the council.
That's correct. Regina, help me out, we received one from Nicole Gottberg, who I believe is in the audience tonight, right?
Yes.
And one more from...
Margie Reed.
Margie Reed, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Not on this, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you, sorry about that.
All right.
It was on another item.
Okay, good.
So, Margie Reed did submit comment on this one.
Okay, thank you very much. And we did, and I did see that, and we all, yeah, okay. So, moving on now, we're going to go ahead and open this up for a public comment at this time. Anybody would like to comment on this particular item, please do so and step up to the podium. Please share your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sue Rodman, I am a resident of Placerville. However, I have friends who live in South Lake Tahoe who say that this Airbnb stuff up there has just destroyed what used to be their neighborhoods. This applicant seems to want to have it both ways, to be able to not be there unless there are guests. Well, that to me seems like it's trying to circumvent the whole ordinance of the city. And I think the appeal on this is absolutely valid, in that you need to support the staff's recommendation and not allow this circumvention of the existing ordinances. And we may need to take a moratorium in order to be able to put together a reasonable ordinance or to see if we want to amend our existing ordinance or not, with lots of public input. Because I think this is how it starts. This is how it started in Tahoe. And I think that we've had some legitimate, old, historic areas that have had bread and breakfast for a very long time, and they have always lived on the premises and done a very good job. But I do not, I don't have any confidence in this one. I think that if this person is really sincere, then they can wait until Placerville comes up with an amended ordinance so that we know what we're doing and what we're getting. That's my comment.
Thank you, Sue.
I'm not a resident, and so I normally only comment on things that have to do with business since I own a business here, because not as a resident, I don't really feel I have a lot of rights to discuss residential issues. So I just want to more generically talk about the process, because I do follow the Planning Commission meetings quite often, they are discussing issues, you know, concerning businesses. And my concern about this is, kind of what's going on? I mean, this was really clear. The guidelines are, this is not some vague area. This is very clear. I've read the guidelines, and as the staff report says, I concur with everything said. I understand the applicant, and I agree with Sue Rodman, just wait, wait until there's some guidelines. But I don't even understand, really, once the application was filled out and it didn't meet the guidelines, why it was even heard. I don't get that, and I don't get why $400 had to be spent to appeal this when it shouldn't have ever even been heard in the first place. And certainly, it shouldn't have ever passed in the Planning Commission. I mean, I listened to that Planning Commission meeting, and if you didn't listen, I recommend you do so, because it started out following what the guidelines are. Why have them if they're not going to be followed? And then an impassioned speech was given by one particular Planning Commissioner, who I won't name, who is in the habit of doing these impassioned pleas, which is, like, let's set this all aside, and look at this person, and they're really trying hard, and they've made this investment, and they'll improve things for us, and so, let's just have minimal government interference. Those aren't that person's words, but my interpretation, and let's just let this person move forward. This was with the last appeal we had, it was the same speech. We're having this speech again. Well, if you're going to take a kind of, I don't know a better word for it, but kind of libertarian or anti-government or anarchist attitude, I don't get why you're on a commission. Why? If you just want to throw it all away? I think the guidelines are there for good reason. And so, that's something, that's what I wanted to talk about, was the process and that you look at that, the video of that meeting, and maybe consider who you appoint to these commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. All right, is there any other further public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission, to the commission, got commission on my mind, to the council for consideration and deliberation here. Any further comments, questions?
I would like to note that I really appreciate the way both the applicant and the appellant showed up. I think you're both very sincere in your approach, and I really appreciate the way you presented yourselves, because sometimes it doesn't always go so nice, and I just want to express my appreciation for that.
I agree.
Yeah. Well, I'm always willing to jump in and start that conversation. You know, really, getting to the nuts and bolts, it seems like there's a hybrid solution offered for the bed and breakfast, and really, we all have to follow the same rules. So, I'm not in favor of, you know, bending these rules until we have everything kind of concrete. I was in favor of staff's recommendation of putting a moratorium on these applications until we get that done, you know? People keep doing that, and we keep doing this, we're just pushing off actually getting the Airbnb or vacation rental ordinance done. So I was in favor of that and reviewing the bed and breakfast ordinance, and let's just bring this all back together. If we need to either uphold or deny the appeal, I was in favor of upholding the appeal because we all have to follow the same rules, like I said. We don't have a condition for part-time occupation, and that could, you know, be addressed when we looked at the rentals altogether. Those are my thoughts.
Similar comments to council member No. I think, I don't know if we need a moratorium, I mean, I don't think we're having our doors burnt down with people asking for bed and breakfast licenses. I could be wrong, I mean, Pierre, correct me if I'm wrong, but if somebody legitimately fits into a bed and breakfast criteria, you know, and they want to start a business, I'll take that TOT tax today versus four months from now. You know, and if they don't meet the basic requirements, and they don't meet the basic requirements, you know, I think that's one thing. I do think that there should be, the bed and breakfast should be part of that conversation with Airbnbs, because things, I mean, the notion of what Airbnbs are in 2021 is probably not the same as what Airbnbs were for maybe, you know, times before. So there could be, you know, different ways to look at what that structure looks like as we go forward, but that's not the conversation for today. Today's conversation is just about, you know, whether or not this application met the current rules, and it doesn't. And so, I would uphold the appeal as well, and then reserve the larger conversation on Airbnb slash bed and breakfast for a later date.
Okay, so I agree with both comments, and I have the same opinion, I don't need to go into it anymore than I think we've already discussed. And I, but I would like to maybe consider Pierre's recommendation that we visit this a little bit more. And I agree with Michael, I'd like to get the TOT tax, but this has created, I think, some problems, and I really think that we need to maybe investigate it a little bit more.
Thank you. So, I do appreciate the honesty and the integrity on both parts in terms of the process and sharing what your true business vision is for your property. You know, this, and I also appreciate the stories and the history of the house, because every one of these old houses in our town have such great history and stories that need to be told and shared, and I think that's just a really cool thing. However, that has really nothing to do with what's at question here. And there's, and neither does, neither does the, all the things going on in Fresno or any of that. We really, you know, each person kind of touched on it ever so slightly for about 10 to 20 seconds. And really, it comes down to, are we following our rules or not? And our Planning Commission is here to apply the rules, make sure that the things that come before them are being heard and understood, and how those apply to our codes and our zoning ordinances and such. And this one, like council member No said, was pretty clear-cut in that it doesn't meet the criteria. And, you know, whether, I think the important thing is, is that it kind of leads into this idea that, well, you can come and stay at a house if you want to, and, I mean, you can come and stay in a house when you have guests, and when you don't, you go somewhere else. And the idea behind our policy for bed and breakfasts, or ordinance for bed and breakfasts, is that you live in the house, so you're occupied, you're a member of this community in that house, not in another house, but in that house. And that is your sole residence, and you live there. I mean, you can travel, you can go on vacations and stuff, but you come home, and that's what you call home. And this is one of those interesting things where how do you police that? And I think one of the issues that Tahoe's ran into is they've had to hire a couple, two or three positions just to manage and make sure that everybody's doing their B&amp;Bs correctly up there. And we here rely, we actually know who all of our B&amp;Bs are, and we know them by name because they're in our community, and you hear about them, because all of them are wonderful people, and you just hear the stories. And so, we know where they are, and we know who they are, and they live in their homes. And that is the crux of this issue in my mind. It truly is. We have an ordinance, and it was put in place, I don't know how long ago, but it was put in place for a very specific reason, that we wanted people to live in the home that the bed and breakfast was there for. And unfortunately, that is just simply not the case on this one. Now, we can change the rules, we can look at doing this differently, but in order for fairness for everybody, we need to apply the same rules to everybody.
Mr. Mayor, just to comment on your comments, first of all, short-term vacation rentals are not allowed in the city, period, as the staff report points out. But the term occupy, as you pointed out, doesn't mean just occupy it when you have guests there, it means you occupy it on a permanent basis. And I think what I wanted to point out is that's the way, if there's any ambiguity there, the city has interpreted and utilized the premise that you have to occupy, as you pointed out, the premises, not just when guests are, but full-time. So, the application of the ordinance is consistent with what you're saying.
All right.
Sue, could I ask a quick question? Is the purpose behind that, the owner living there, is that to eliminate what happened in Tahoe? That, I mean, I really think that should be daylighted, why we're saying that, why that's so important, right?
Correct. Short-term vacation rentals do not have, if you have, if you allow them, generally do not have a requirement that the owner live there.
Right.
Yeah.
It provides some integrity in the process of, you know, when you're living in the home and you have guests in your home, you're treated a little differently than just the people that are there. With that, I am going to, is there any further questions for applicants or?
No.
No, I just have, I guess, a process question, because I know Pierre did mention, you know, a potential moratorium, but I don't think that's, I don't feel that that's part of this topic right here. I'm more than happy to entertain that under future agenda items, but I just feel like this, it isn't, shouldn't be clustered into this particular topic.
On that topic, I'm not interested in a moratorium, I think we have some things in place that we're working on, but we have a policy or a process here that works, and this actually doesn't fit in that process, but if somebody else has a home, they would like to do this, I don't see any problem with that either, like you said.
So, okay, so therein, what I am questioning is, how did this happen? Does the Planning Commission need to have a lesson, or, I don't want to see it happen again?
I think Mr. Revoz indicated that it was a mistake. The staff believed that this person was going to truly occupy the premises, so that this was not an issue at that time.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct. If I could speak to that. As I mentioned earlier in my oral presentation, when staff accepted the application, staff was under the assumption that the applicant intended on living on the premises. And so, the staff recommendation then went to the Planning Commission. I believe the Planning Commission also acted under the same assumption until the very end of that meeting, for any of you that watched the Planning Commission meeting. Then it came out through inquiry with the applicant by various commissioners that the applicant did not live on the premises, but maybe was only going to stay on the premises when there were guests staying in the house.
I understand that, and I read the report, and when I, and I saw that one of the commissioners asked explicitly if she was, and what you just said, I'm not going to go through it again, but, so, when that was brought out, why wasn't this whole thing stopped? I mean, that's what I don't, didn't the planning, whoever's the Planning Commissioner and the person, the staff, did they not grasp that?
Well, let's just say it was a three-to-two vote to approve it. There were two Planning Commissioners that felt that it didn't meet the criteria and conditions specified in the ordinance. From staff's perspective, we were scratching our heads that should the bed and breakfast then continue, not in conformance with the criteria and said ordinance, that we were going to have a code enforcement issue on our hands, because the commission did approve a bed and breakfast subject to the 16 criteria, which included that the applicant live on the premises. I know there was a lot of discussion of some of the other criteria, such as the historical integrity and the historic value of the property. Well, that's all, definitely, it meets that condition. The condition was condition eight.
Thank you for that clarification. You know, this, in part, this goes down to the integrity of the applicant and being honest with the council, and unfortunately, it doesn't meet the criteria, and we'll see how that goes with the vote. But I do appreciate the integrity in sharing with us where you stood on that and how that was going to work. With that said...
I'll make a motion, I'll just make one more comment beforehand to go to Pierre's, I mean, because I know they're working on a future item for us on this issue, which is, you know, we still are probably hundreds of beds, I think we're hundreds of beds under what we need for this area in terms of overnight stays for tourists. We've had lots of discussions, I mentioned this before, on other controversial topics that said we were, you know, driving tourism away, but you still need a place for them to stay. And so, I do think as we look at updating our bed and breakfast and short-term rentals, that has to, we have to look at that as well, so that we have sort of a modern, I think, policy on that, and also understanding that whether we get a hotel, a modern hotel in the future or not, we're looking at two, three, four years, maybe longer, before it gets tilted up, if we ever get one. And so, we, I think, have to look at other options as well. So just a comment on that. But on this, I will...
I have one more question. Pierre, really quickly, did the council, I mean, did the commission, when they were deliberating this at the very end, because I did not watch that video, did they recognize the full weight of the issue that we are making this decision on at the time they made their decision?
It was my sense that at least one of the commissioners has a little bit more property rights advocacy, and so that commission then interpreted condition number eight that would allow the person to actually, as long as a person was at the... to actually, as long as a person was at the residence during the guests, that that would qualify as being on the premises as opposed to that being their principal residence. But that's my interpretation of what sort of transpired at the end of that meeting to get the three to two vote.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I am going to make a motion to reverse the decision of the planning commission and deny CUP 21 dash 01 and uphold the appeal as recommended by our staff.
I'll second.
All right. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Pirelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Thank you. All right, with that, we are going to take a seven and a half minute break and for, and we'll be back. Because usually it's five and people end up seven and a half, so I just went seven and a half. So we'll see you back here in, in just a little bit. All right, moving on. Item number 12, bring, bring this meeting back to order. Item number 12, discussion action items. Adopt a resolution declaring a drought state of emergency, stage one water alert citywide effective immediately, and ask Placerville Water customers to begin reducing their baseline water consumption by 15% on a voluntary basis and authorizing and directing the city manager and his designees to take all actions deemed reasonably necessary to respond to the declared emergency conditions, including implementing all volunteer stage one drought actions and detailed, as detailed in the Eldorado Irrigation District 2021 Update Drought Action Plan, by the way, which is attached to our agenda electronically. So if you want to go online, you can, you can read that. It's about a 40-page document. It's actually quite interesting. And so with that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city's water supply agreement with Eldorado Irrigation District requires the city to implement and enforce the district's current drought preparedness plan, as you mentioned, and the drought action plan during district declared drought conditions. Due to the unusually dry conditions and dwindling water supplies, the EID Board of Directors adopted a resolution declaring a state of emergency, stage one water alert district-wide, including the city of Placerville at its meeting held June 28th. Staff recommends the city adopt a similar resolution for city water customers. Tonight, Brian Mueller, EID's Director of Engineering, is here to present an overview of the current drought conditions and components of the stage one water alert. And with that, I'll hand it over to Brian.
Evening, Mayor Thomas and, and council members. I'm Brian Mueller. I'm the Engineering Director with EID. Thank you for having me tonight to, and my presentation is going to be pretty quick to discuss the current water supply conditions in the county and what led to EID's stage one declaration. So I'll see if this works good. Really, there's, there's two main areas that we're looking at right now, that areas of concern, I'll call it. But first, our, our water supply conditions are adequate to serve our customers this year. It's just, the concern is that if we have another dry winter coming up, that'll be three straight years of dry or critically dry conditions, things could get worse with our reservoir storage. So we're looking really at Jenkinson Lake or Sly Park Reservoir, as you call it. The level that, that we're at right now is pretty low compared to this time of year for normal years. And also down at Folsom Lake, everybody knows Folsom Lake is really low. They didn't get the inflow into Folsom Lake this year. And we also pump out of Folsom Lake for Eldorado Hills customers, but with an integrated system, we're asking for all of our customers conserve, just in case we have some pumping concerns or capacity limitations out of Folsom. So those two things were, were the primary areas that led to, on June 28th, our EID Board declared a stage one water alert, which for us, in our four-stage drought matrix, it's a 50% voluntary conservation. And then, just interestingly enough, just last week, the governor signed an executive order proclamation for the state, pretty much doing the same thing, asking for the state to conserve 50% compared with 2020 levels. So these graphs are going to be pretty tough for those in the audience to read, I know, but I'll, I'll try to shoot my pointer here. This is, here we go. So this is, it's called the eight-station precipitation index. This really goes over the precipitation for the northern Sierra, which we're a part of. And you can see the blue line right here, that is where we're at in, in this water year. So it's, it's just right above what the worst year that we've ever had back in 1976, 1977 during that drought. And then interestingly enough, this, the year prior is the next line right above there in, in 19 and 20, that water year was, was further dry too. So we've got, like I said, we've got two straight dry years going in our area that are not too far better than the 76, 77 drought, as far as precipitation. This is a chart for snow water content. And again, a lot of squiggly lines. We're in the middle section here, that's the central Sierra, and I won't try to point to this one here, but there's, the blue line is what our snow water content has been over the course of the year. And you see it just trends below average. The average is that light blue area. This is our reservoir storage. These are all of our storage reservoirs that rely on to serve customers. The first four, Caples Lake, Silver Lake, Echo Lake, and Lake Aloha, those are our four reservoirs in the upper portions of our system that would make up our Project 184 system. So Caples Lake is our largest reservoir. It's about 84% full. Silver Lake, about 78% full, and Echo and Aloha are a little bit lower. As I mentioned though, the, the, the main concern is, next one down, Jenkinson Lake, that's currently holding at about 29,600 acre feet and dropping, which is about 72% of capacity, which is pretty low for this time of year and in the middle of summer. And I'll show a graph of that here a little bit. Folsom Lake, 28% of capacity. That's obviously the, the concern region-wide, because there's a lot of agencies that are also calling drought declarations in the Sacramento area that rely on Folsom Lake for their supplies. And then Weber Reservoir, it's a very small reservoir east of Placerville that, that is in good shape. Just speaking of Folsom Reservoir, I mentioned we, we're concerned about just our pumping ability. The projections for that reservoir as far as how it trends going into fall and into the winter, keeps getting worse. And just the, the key takeaways from this graph, the, the sloping lines are the projections, the range of projections for how Folsom Lake will drop as we get into fall and winter. And then the horizontal lines represent our pump station capacity. And so when those two lines start getting really close, we start losing capacity of our pump station. I know, you know, being in the city of Placerville, what do we care about Folsom? We don't get water supplies from Folsom, but we are an integrated system. And so the less water the EID can deliver out of Folsom, the more we have to deliver out of Jenkinson Lake and the South Fork and American River. So it's all kind of intertwined. This is a, a chart of our district-wide demands and the only thing I'll really want to point out here, the red line, which is right here along this line. We had a really dry spring, of course, and so we're seeing a really higher demand trends. Our customers using more water than they did last year. And so that's really where, where the 15% voluntary conservation would come in to try to bring our demands back in line with, with last year's demand and even hopefully a little bit lower in the end, by the end of the year than last year's 2020 demands. Okay, and this one, I'm going to go through every line on this and describe every. So this is just a lot of spaghetti. This is the Sly Park storage history. Sly Park was built in the mid-1950s. And so this is how the, the reservoir has trended and where we're at right now, if I can use the pointer, is right about there. So the takeaway from this slide is that the, really below that area, there's only been about six years since in the history of Sly Park Reservoir that it's been lower than it is right now. So that's obviously got us concerned and we've also tried to project how this reservoir will decline over the year. And you can see it declines down to about 15,000 acre feet. If, if we have another dry fall and into winter, by the end of the year, the reservoir could get down to about 15,000 acre feet, which is really low for that reservoir.
Quick question.
Sure.
What is the heavy dotted line? I see the, they're both 2021.
Yeah, so the, the heavy dotted line is, a step back a minute, we have, it, it's tough to describe without a map, but we have what's called the Hazel Creek Tunnel. And so this is a tunnel that we can import water into Jenkinson Lake from, essentially from the South Fork and American River. And so that line represents not using the Hazel Creek Tunnel, essentially. We actually imported over 8,000 acre feet from our South Fork and Amer, River supplies into Jenkinson Lake. And so that's, that's the only reason why the reservoir is at this high. If, if we hadn't done that, if we didn't have that feature, we'd be down about 8,000 acre feet. That was more for our board's interest with, with the Hazel Creek Tunnel, but that, that's just the explanation for that. So it, it is a really great feature that we've had for years that when we have supplies available from one source, we can import it into another source to help out when, when one source isn't doing as well. And I kind of, just as a, I kind of think of this chart here as, as a, as a car engine. You can see all the squiggly lines up at the top. That's your car running at about 2,000 RPM, you know, nice and steady. When we start getting down, lower, that's really your car engine running at about 5,000 or 6,000. It's designed to do that. The reservoir is designed to drop that low, but you start getting uncomfortable, you know, at that, at that level. Okay, so moving on to, this is a, just a summary of our drought action plan. We have essentially four drought stages. And so right now, the district is in our stage one water alert where we describe our supplies as slightly restricted. And again, that calls for up to 50% voluntary conservation. Stage two water warning is the next level, which implements more of the mandatory measures to, to try to achieve 30% conservation. And this is where we were at in the 2014 to 2016 drought. We were at a stage two warning where we had some mandatory measures like odd even watering days and such. We're not there yet and hopefully we don't get there. I think if, if the question comes up of, you know, will we be in a stage two? Probably if we have another dry winter. But again, I think for the remainder of the year, we'll, we'll stay in a stage one, would be my guess, until we start seeing any other indications that we're going to be entering another dry year. And then going out in front of that, stage three would ask for mandatory conservation up to 50%. And then stage four is where we're really in an emergency situation where we're just down to health and safety, water uses. So again, the, the stage one water alert has been declared for all district customers. It's to initiate public awareness of possible water shortages and try to encourage water conservation now to try to prevent those future potential shortages. Again, targeting up to 50% demand reduction on a voluntary basis, and that's compared to our baseline of 2020. This slide just lists some of the ways that we, we think are the best bets to, to achieve that 50% conservation. Really, it's on the outdoor irrigation. It would be no surprise. We ask our customers to irrigate only in the early morning, evening, early evening hours to avoid, you know, irrigating near the middle of the day when you get a lot of evaporation. Check all your irrigation system for leaks, you know, make any repairs that are necessary. And then really, the, the big one is just to try to adjust your sprinkler runtimes to avoid runoff and also just if you can reduce the amount of days or the, the time that your sprinklers are running or any outdoor, other outdoor irrigation. I think that's the best way to achieve this 50% conservation. Aside from that, as far as district staff, we're, we're monitoring our supply and demands, monitoring Jenkinson Lake's storage. We're, we're looking at our treatment plant production to see if there's, we'll be monitoring that over the course of the year to see what kind of savings we are achieving compared with 2020. And then also just keeping an eye on Folsom Lake levels and maintaining our pumping capacity down there. So that is it for my slides. Are there any questions of me?
I have a question, and maybe I'm getting into politics, and I'm sorry. But how much attention are you folks paying attention to this climate change issue and maybe some, at some time going to have to, our whole, you know, situation is changing?
Yeah, we do take a look at climate change. There are, you know, the studies are kind of all over the place, but I, I think it's pretty well accepted that, you know, over time, maybe it's not immediately, but over the long-term, there will be some changes and, and we're trying to plan for that in the long-term as far as our planning scenarios, as far as, you know, I, I think it's going to affect, from what I hear, runoff, timing of runoff, you know, and there probably is going to be a need for additional storage in the county to try to mitigate that. So it, it's hard to say, you know, and there's not really any actions that are being implemented right now for that, but there's just, it's more of a long-term thing in our head to try to plan for that.
And I get that, but I just wondered if, you know, that was being considered. Do we have any areas of possible more storage?
There's been, yeah, there's been several over the long history of, of the county, several areas. Right now, I think the county water agent, Eldorado County Water Agency is looking at a reservoir that we've also had in some of our planning documents called Alder Reservoir. It's an on-stream reservoir, so the, you know, the, the likelihood of construction of a, of a on-stream reservoir is, is difficult, you know, from that respect. But that, I think that's the main one that's being looked at now as far as county-wide.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no politics there either, huh?
Yeah.
I have a question, and I think this goes to, to politics as well, but in terms of the Folsom Lake water, if it's, as it's, as it continues to go down, does our portion of that in terms of our water rights, is that proportional to like everyone else? Or do we get bumped by somebody with more senior rights if it continues to go down?
Good question. So we have, we have several different water supply sources that we pump out of Folsom Lake. One is what we call Permit 20112. It's a 17,000 acre foot water right. And it, it all kind of depends on priority date. That one has a 1926 priority date. Some of our rights are even more senior than 19, pre-1914. So those are the most sacred and pretty bulletproof as far as reductions. But Permit 12012, being with that date, is pretty solid as well. We don't anticipate any cutbacks there. But we also have other supplies that are subject to a Warrant Act contract where, which is essentially a lease agreement with reclamation where we, we move our water into their facility and, and pump it out. And so we have a contract with them. And so those, those rights are sometimes subject to cutbacks. We also have just a, a regular service contract with reclamation out of Folsom as well that's cut back.
Thank you. And you said we wouldn't, a stage two, wouldn't it be probably until winter if that was to come about?
Yeah, it's hard to say. I, yeah, we'll have to play it by ear as far as, you know, as we go into this fall. Usually we start getting some rainfall in November. So if, if the, we, there's other websites and, and data sources that we use that try to project the, you know, the three-month outlook. And so if those outlooks are looking pretty bleak, then it could be foreseeable, maybe later this year, that we would call for something like that, or recommend that at least.
Thank you.
So other than the Farmer's Almanac, do you have any other, other, other resources that tell you, give you an idea of what our water's looking like this fall, in the winter?
The only thing that, that I know some of our staff look at is, is the, the La Nina, El Nino cycles. And I think, talking with one of our staff, our operations director, it wasn't looking good there. I think it was supposed to be a La Nina, which I, sometimes or most of the time is associated with dry conditions. And then it wouldn't be until next spring that it would transition into an El Nino. I don't understand all the, all the details of that, but I know we, we do look at that. But, and from that standpoint, it's not looking real great as far as this winter.
Okay. How will we know if we're, what, what metric are we measuring? Is it the flow into the city? Is it the individual meters that we're going to take a reading on? I mean, what, how can we communicate to the public that yes, we're being successful? No, we're not hitting our mark? Where's, where do, where do, where are we going to find that information? Where are we going to find that information? Or how are we going to communicate that?
We monitor that through our bills from EID and compare it to the previous year. And we'd be happy to share that with the public as we progress through this drought.
That's every other month. Does EID have an inflow into the city that they measure?
We have several, like large bulk meters, and I'm sure we could provide, you know, our readings from that as they're available if we don't already to the city. I'm sure we build the city based on that usage. So we probably already give that to you already, I'm sure.
Is that bill, is that on a monthly basis or?
Every two months.
Every two, still there too?
Just like us.
Okay, all right. Are you, have you been aware of, this is kind of out of your scope, but have you been aware of or had conversations with like the Forest Service or anybody to know if there's this particular drought is going to have the same impact on our trees? Like the bark beetle, you know, with the reduction of water in the tree itself? It gives opportunity for these beetles to, you know, take hold and overrun some of these trees? Is that, are we at that place? Does anybody, have you had conversations on those?
Not myself. I bet some of our staff, I bet our recreation manager up at Sly Park has had those type of conversations with somebody in operations. But yeah, that's a good question. I haven't been involved with that. But I'm sure it's on somebody's mind as far as that. We've done a lot of work up at Sly Park and Downing and getting rid of some of these dead trees. We had a lot up there. So hopefully it doesn't happen again, but that's a good question.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious, you know, just in terms of a community outreach and, you know, because there are ways to mitigate that. Unfortunately, one of them is using more water. But also there's, you know, there's companies that come out and work with you to mitigate that too. Because there's a lot of dead trees in our community that are left over from the last bark beetle. We haven't seen an impact of it recently, but we could be going into that same process again. You know, I think it's another way that we can communicate to our public because that's, again, another fire danger as well. If we have a huge kill-off, that would be a big problem for us as well. Thank you very much for the information you provided. I know I had a lot of questions about that and to understand why and how we're going to measure it and how it's going to do. So I really appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to share all this information with us.
Not a problem at all, yeah. Thank you very much.
All right. I'm going to open it up for public comment at this time. If you could, if there's any questions that you might stick around to answer, that'd be great, if there's any.
He's taller than I am. Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L. So very much concerned about our water in the city and how we have done a lot of work with Measure H and Measure L to reduce the amount of leakage that we've had from our city. And we've done a pretty good job with that. On reservoirs, I worked for the Forest Service. So I'm well aware of Alder Creek. And it got zapped when they put the SO FAR project on hold. And I'm one, would like to know what's going on with Texas Hill. Is that still a viable option? Because that was once proposed as a reservoir that would definitely feed into this county since it's next door to Placerville. So thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Kirk Smith. I'm sorry to be the conveyor of doom and gloom, but I think that the situation will merit much stronger measures in the not-too-distant future. I know I was at a social function not long ago, said the word drought, and the response almost was drought? What drought? Right now, just last week, up in Canada, they had millions of shellfish cooked in the water. This is not San Diego. These are mussels and clams that opened up and cooked. Nearby, Keloma, E. coli levels are very high and dangerously high. I grew up when Sly Park, Folsom, and Oroville were built, and I'm sure a number of others. And right now, all of those are down to about 40% of capacity and continue to drop quickly. Water authorities at Oroville say that by September, they expect they're going to close down their hydroelectric power to 80,000 people. And that's just for Oroville. The American River feeding into Sacramento has salmon that may die. That's all the fish. So the consequences are severe. I think, and I like to avoid speculation and frown on it when others do the same thing because I have no facts other than just what's out there and to draw inferences. But I think the governor, for example, has taken a soft step. Why? If you can do something as moronically simple as require masks during a pandemic, and then you have people talking about Hitler and, you know, Nazism and Socialism? God, can you imagine what would happen if we just went back to a few years ago during droughts? When we had people alternate between when they could water their lawns on odd numbers and even numbers? There'd be more grief, but that's just a guess. A few years ago, people thought, oh, the drought's over. We've got plenty of water. But if you know from growing up here, the reservoirs, whether it's Texas Hill, Sly Park, wherever it is, that's not it. It's the snowpack. And so yes, Councilmember Burley is right. There is a factor about global warming because the snowpack melted. Anybody remember the name Ice House? That literally was ice, and that's where Pearson got it. And it's progressively gotten warmer. So it's not the answer. But we've had cycles of droughts before, and the worst was the 1930s. But the demographics have changed. Our economy has changed. The dependency on air conditioning. So I'm just suggesting that in the not-so-distant future, there'll be a need to take tougher standards. Not because we want to, but there'll be a need to. And I think that Mayor Thomas, you're right about the dying trees. And what we found before is that's a cumulative effect. It may not happen right away. But at this rate, we're going to see it. And if you don't think fire is a big problem, just look at nearby Oregon. That fire that affects the power lines coming down this way is doubling every day, according to what I heard at NPR tonight. So that's just a suggestion about the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. All right. Seeing no other people for public comment, we're going to go ahead and close that and bring it back to the council for any comments or motion here.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a few more comments?
Please do. Thank you.
I just wanted to make the council aware that staff is prepared to do our part. We're looking at reducing irrigation levels in all parks in open space by 15%. We're inspecting all irrigation systems and making repairs as needed. We have a heightened leak detection and repairs of city water mains and latrals. We are urging all city employees and contractors to begin conserving water during day-to-day operations. And staff plans on circulating a public notice through the utility bills, Facebook page, and website, asking residents to begin conserving 15% of their baseline consumption. And water-saving suggestions will also be provided in the notice, including EID's water conservation program, which includes rebates for low-flow toilets, aerators for faucets and those kind of things. So those will be available to city customers as well. And full disclosure, excuse me. The recommended conservation measures could have a negative impact on the city's water rate revenues, as you can imagine. If all rate pairs achieve 15% conservation level prospectively through June 30 of 2022, the forecasted impact to the Water Enterprise Fund would be $284,000. Staff anticipates that the potential $284,000 revenue impact could be absorbed by the Water Enterprise Fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures and operating reserves. And we'll provide additional analysis and information to you and the public as we move through the drought. So that's all I have.
So for clarity, it will not affect our sewer rates, though, if they cut their water usage?
It potentially, as they use less water, it can affect their sewer rate as well. Residential customers are based on previous winter consumption, so that wouldn't change. But for commercial customers, it could.
Okay.
Yeah, tentatively, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I think it boils down to we need to concentrate a little bit more on the issue and not saving money. I mean, I know we're all, you know, cognizant of that, but we can't allow that to, you know...
I think it's important to recognize and be able to, and I appreciate, you know, coming up with that number because that's an important number, to acknowledge it so that we can work within that as well. Yeah. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second?
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Burley?
Aye.
Councilmember Now?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. All right. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening. Yes. All right. All right. Moving on to item number 12.2. And I will be recusing myself on this particular issue because I have a piece, or my wife has a piece of property, her family has a piece of property adjacent to this particular, nope, this is not it. Oops, I don't have that much property.
You don't own that one.
No. No, sorry. All right. That's next one. I totally missed that.
That's okay.
So I don't have to recuse myself on this one. All right, moving on. 12.2. I hope my wife's not watching. 12.2. Direct staff to place a demand upon the current owner of 5.59, 559 Main Street, requiring code enforcement action relevant to city code to address an existing failed retained wall adjacent to the active public sewer main location in Hangtown Creek. And I'm going to go ahead and let Ms. Neves finish just and go ahead and give us her staff report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
In late 2019, staff became aware of an initial wall failure within Hangtown Creek that supports improvements in the property of 559 Main Street. The existing wall is comprised of concrete that predates the 1950s with a failed wood retaining wall directly installed above it. The city reached out to the property owner to open the discussion for the wall's replacement. And by February of 2020, the condition actually worsened, and discussions regarding code enforcement commenced further. The reason for the city's growing concern is that the failing wall is now leaning on a concrete pier that supports an active city sewer main located in Hangtown Creek. Should the wall fail and damage the sewer main, it would result in raw sewage spill in Hangtown Creek. Through working with the property owner, the city obtained bids for the replacement of the wall for the property owner's considerations. The other option available included the property owner seeking out engineering design and private non-pervailing wage bids. To make a long story short, you know, we had a pandemic, and the property owner moved on forward and said, asked the city to go ahead and proceed with the bids that we had obtained following removal of a large tree that would allow for the rebuild of the wall to commence. One bid was received from Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, in the amount of $46,024. The proposed construction of an ultra-block wall, which is similar to a recent retaining wall replacement that supports the parking lot of the independent restaurant, this work would commence through a reimbursement agreement, which is presented in concept and form for council's approval tonight. Additionally, when vegetation was removed from the face of the wall, it was discovered that the wall's damage extended into the portion of the retaining wall that supports Town Hall parking lot and pedestrian bridge connecting to Eldorado Trail just beyond our doors over here to the east. Photos are included in staff's report, and additional assessment is recommended. The property owner of 559 Main Street has also asked for continued use of public parking spaces to support business operations, including parking, loading, and business waste collections with Eldorado disposal. To allow continued use of this public space, the city is requiring the property owner to enter into a long-term lease agreement, as it's done on other public parking lots throughout the city with other private property owners intended for private use. This agreement is also presented in concept and form for council's consideration for approval. The proposed funding source to support the code enforcement action comes from the Sewer Enterprise Fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures because, the whole reason why we are so nervous about this is its focus on protecting the active city sewer main located within the creek. Therefore, the five actions for council's consideration are as follows. Is moving forward with placing the demand upon the owner for 559, and it sounds a bit more intense than it actually is. It's just part of the language for going through code enforcement action. To address the failed retaining wall adjacent to the city's public sewer main. Award of the contract to Veerkamp in the amount of $88,000 to rebuild the failed retaining wall, as well as additional assessment of the wall that supports 549 Main Street Town Hall for potential replacement as well. Approval in concept and form of a reimbursement agreement and approval of the lease agreement in concept and form for use with the property owner of 559 Main Street. And approval of $100,000 budget appropriation from the Sewer Enterprise Fund for Veerkamp's contract, as well as staff time and ancillary expenditures to replace the wall and assess, as well as address the damage at 549 Main Street. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Neves. Any questions?
Mayor, could I just, just one comment I wanted to make.
Please.
Tonight, we handed out a different contract, I shouldn't say different, same contract with some minor amendments that you have before you. Does not change what has been presented to you in terms of the intent or the outcome of the work that we're talking about. There's some minor changes that we worked with the owner on, and we are in agreement on that contract at this point. And also want to mention, Mr. Scott is in the audience tonight if you would like to hear from him.
I imagine the owner of the property is reluctantly agreeing to this contract, but I can't imagine having owned property. I know that things happen. So no further questions or?
I just have one question. I'm looking at this picture, Ms. Neves, and I'm wondering how much that tree that's right there, how much does that have to do with, is it pushing?
Are you talking about the tree that was removed?
I mean, it's gone now, but did that have a lot to do with it?
I mean, that was absolutely something that was looked at and considered as a contributing factor to the failure of the retaining wall, you know? And it was really just a beautiful tree. It just was a bummer. It was planted in the wrong spot.
I know. And so what leads me, we've got several of those trees?
Yes.
And so is maybe that going to have to be a requirement, that we're going to have to go in there and have some trees cut down?
We're looking at that kind of as a case-by-case basis. We never remove more trees than we need to.
I understand, and I hate to see them removed, but if it's going to cause this, then maybe we have to.
Yeah, we, I mean, as a, you know, kind of a global view of our retaining walls along Hangtown Creek, we are definitely going through and addressing the more critical ones right now. I do anticipate that in the, moving forward in the future, this is not going to be an uncommon item that we have for discussion. It's actually tied a little bit to an item later on in the agenda, too. So the walls along Hangtown Creek, they've lived a good life, and they've done a great job in serving their purpose and giving more usable space to property owners, including the city's properties. But, you know, just, you know, nothing lasts forever in this world. So they are about due for rebuilds and reassessments.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Could I make one comment on that also? We are looking at that. We won't know for sure until this project takes place what effect that the tree or other elements around the wall actually had effect. And that's part of what is in the agreement, is we'll do that analysis when we do the wall replacement, find out what the real cause was, and then we can go from there, so.
Thank you. Cleve. And Ms. Neves, for your report and comments. Please, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. And anybody who wishes to address this issue, please step up to the podium and let us know your name.
Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L. This is a really good example of why we need to get sewer lines out of our creeks. And this really has got to be done. So definitely support getting this done as soon as possible.
All right. Please.
Mark Scott, owner, my wife and I are owners of 559. Been working with Cleve and Rebecca for the last couple of years, trying to get this resolved. Certain comments, you know, I can substantiate, you know, there's real questions about the redwood tree that we brought down, which was just a magnificent tree. I think everybody that was here the day we took it down was just heartbroken. So anyway, that was a sad event, I think, here on Main Street. Second item is, I think there was comments made about the sonotubes that hold up that sewer line. And there are five in question between my property and the city property. And the only place where the wall is touching that sonotube is actually on city property. So personally, I don't think the redwood tree was as big an issue as other shrubs and trees that were there, one on mine and one on the city property. And, but we are wholeheartedly in agreement that something has to be done. And just days ago, Cleve and I hammered out an acceptable agreement that we can go forward and take care of, take care of this action and resolve it, which we are really looking forward to. So Cleve did a... So Cleve did a fantastic job. A lot of patience, I can tell you. So, anyway, thank you, and look forward to the next step.
Thank you, Mark. Any further public comment? All right, see you in none. I would like to express my appreciation. I said it before, but I'll say it again, these, these, these things don't always go so nice, and people don't always work for the common goal and understand their responsibilities and, and the city's shared responsibility in, in working on this. And it doesn't always happen that way, and I, and I really do appreciate, because it ends up costing everybody more money and just these attorneys end up winning on these types of things. Right, John? So.
He's ignoring you.
And, 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 and it doesn't help the city, and it doesn't help anybody else. And, and, you know, the city's been sued enough and on a variety of different issues that has cost the city a significant amount of money over the past couple of years. And, and for not. And this would have been another one. We would have had to work through it and come out probably to a conclusion it would cost everybody more money, similar to what we had. So I truly do appreciate what you've done and Cleve's efforts in working with, and Ms. Neves' efforts in working with the property owner and getting this to a resolution. So thank you with that. Any further comments? All right, if we can get a. You know what, you're the property owner, you're, you're spending a ton of money. Please do.
Already a ton of money. And I have, between my attorney and hiring my own structural engineer from Young Doll, basically, it was an alert, is what it was, that I got from their report, which I'll give Cleve a copy of. This whole side from Main Street to the creek, a lot of that is nothing but fill. And fill from the 30s and the 40s. And that fill, given the construction procedures, whatever, in the 30s and 40s, of course, is not adequate to what it is today. So that's why I think we're having so many of these properties adjacent to the creek starting to fail. And it isn't, you know, I, yes, the first thing we can point the finger at is that tree, that shrub, that whatever, but it basically comes down to the underlying fill that is on between Main Street and the creek. And I think that's something to be a part of all of this discussion, that inevitably this will happen again with some other property owner.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I wanted to, and that is the main cause of what is going on right here. And proof of that is you can look at even on the city parking side, where they have made certain, because of the lack of drainage, they have made certain attempts to try to create the drainage, the flow off the parking lots away from what can seep into the ground. So, anyway, I wanted to alert the city.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And we'll go ahead, anybody else for public comment again, since we opened it back up? All right, see you in none. We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move that we adopt a resolution as staff recommends.
Second. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Thank you very much. And apparently, my wife was watching. So.
Did she say now it's okay, Dennis?
Yes. Yes, problem with having a wife in politics. All right, so item number 12.4, this is the one that I will need to.
Oh, point three.
12.3, yes, I was looking, wow. Bear with me.
You're just trying to ignore this.
Thank you. Item 12.3, this is the one that I must recuse myself from because I do have property, or my wife has property adjacent to this subject property. So you all have a good time, I'll be back in a few minutes. And I'm gonna turn it over to Patty Borelli to run this portion of the meeting, since our esteemed vice mayor is out enjoying herself in another state. Thank you.
So it's been a long time since I've held this position, so correct me if I do something wrong. Okay, item 12.3, adopt a resolution. One, approving a consulting services agreement with Wood Rogers, Inc., in a not-to-exceed amount of $34,000 to conduct a record of survey and engineering support for the Hangtown Creek culvert repair. And, number two, approve a budget appropriation in the amount of $40,000 from the general fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures, expenditures for said project. Ms. Neves.
Thank you, Councilwoman Borelli. Unfortunately, this is not a new topic of discussion, nor is this culvert not been discussed prior either, but it is unfortunately becoming more urgent. The culvert on 2, at 209 Main Street, also known as Main Street Tap House, has failed. The failure has occurred within an area that is currently believed to be city-owned public parking that is leased to the use of 209 Main Street. The failed section is easily identified by a developed sinkhole that continues to deepen and is now barricaded off by concrete barriers for public safety. Staff's report shows photos of the failure inside the culvert below the parking surface sinkhole, and in 2019, a feasibility study was approved by city council in November considering options available. I did bring a copy of it here, so it's kinda what it looked like, and it had a series of different alternatives for partial replacement, for full replacement, as well as daylighting the creek. As I mentioned previously, we believe this culvert is located in city right-of-way, but we're not 100% sure. We've been in contact with Caltrans regarding this area, and it was believed to be relinquished to the city at the close of the Highway 50 Ops project. Relinquishment was approved by council in 2013, but county records identify portions of this area may still be either state or privately owned. For that reason, staff is recommending approval of a consultant contract with Wood Rogers to conduct a record of survey and engineering support for addressing the Hangtown Creek, which will help the city determine ownership. Staff is also recommending the budget appropriation to cover the said contract, as well as the portion of the contract related to engineering support is to provide some supportive recommendations for daylighting the creek. Back in the meeting in 2019, when the draft feasibility study was first reviewed by city council, that was at that time the direction we were headed. However, you know, as we progress on this and we find out who owns what, we may consider one of the other alternatives, but I just kinda wanted to put that in the middle of the table, too. So that concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments from council?
I just have a, yeah, I guess one question. So Rebecca, on, I mean, how, we're gonna do the, I mean, we'll approve this and do the study, but how, how far off do you think we are from, I mean, regardless of who owns it, you know, from getting work started on this particular, because I know it's, it's looking obviously pretty bad, so how long can we wait, I guess?
So that's part of us looking at doing the engineering support component of the contract is, you know, we have a couple structural and bridge engineers looking at it for us to make the recommendation based on the last iteration of direction from council, and that was to daylight the creek. Obviously recognizing the impacts of what that means on the surface, that we may revise that as we come forward, but we actually have been going out there quite a bit with them. They've been doing what I refer to as, you know, the business development portion of their, their good client outreach, and they've been showing up for free and giving us some assessments on things. And we've actually been talking with a local contractor and looking at the realistic possibility of daylighting it, and it does seem to be a pretty easy approach. Now, these, the culvert walls are same age range as the rest of Hangtown Creek walls, although I will say that the culvert walls for this segment are actually in substantially better condition than other locations. They need a little bit of scour protection, which is, you know, basically prevents undermining underneath the walls from the creek channel itself, but that's actually a fairly cheap and effective measure.
That's good news.
Yeah.
That's a little bit good news, so.
Why do you think that this has deteriorated so badly?
Well, you know, you may see from the photos, the culvert top is actually like a, it's basically a wooden deck that was assembled through a series of timber stringers, and the timber has rotted out. So half of the culvert is comprised of a top with timber stringers, and the other half of the culvert is comprised of a combination of reinforced concrete and aluminum corrugated metal framework, basically, kind of like a ribbing. That portion of the culvert is in great shape.
It's holding up.
Yeah, you can, I mean, you really, even from the surface, if you look at the parking lot, you can see exactly where the two separate materials were constructed. You know, we, you know, didn't really go through the, maybe necessarily the proper assessment at the time when it was relinquished, but the good news is that that other portion, the more western portion of the culvert, western 100 feet, in fact, looks to be in great shape.
Well, that's all good news.
Yes.
Knowing what you know about the rest of Hangtown Creek and where it's been, you know, we've allowed businesses through the years to, you know, establish, do you think that this is the same situation as anyplace else, or was this just a, a specific project that was done that created this?
I mean, as far as construction of the timber stringers, I believe that was actually a portion of when it was Old Canal Street. Went back through the old maps.
Oh.
Prior to construction of Highway 50, and that was a portion of Old Canal Street.
Okay.
So, I mean, it just happened to be an acceptable means and methods for a bridge construction back then, or culvert construction. Unfortunately, if this culvert was just like five feet wider, it could be classified as a bridge, and then we could go after highway bridge program funding, but unfortunately, we missed it by that much.
You couldn't go down there at the darker than night and widen?
It may have been a thought in my head for a brief moment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, any other questions? Okay, I'll open it up to the public for any questions or comments.
Is it her light on?
Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L. And while this isn't definitely a Measure H, Measure L, it is our creek, and we really do need to get this taken care of. That, that sinkhole and those concrete barriers just cannot stay there long-term. We need to get this one done.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council. For discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hopefully that went well. Have no doubt. Oh, great, on to item 12.4, adoption of resolution approving construction contract with Wenshaw? Thank you. And Sons Incorporated from the, for the Conrad Street Sewer Line Replacement Project. And I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Neves.
Thank you. Of all the items that I've brought before you this evening, this one's a little bit easier to digest. We love these construction contracts. So city staff designed in-house the Conrad Street Sewer Main Replacement, along with significant effort and help from our amazing public work staff. So much appreciation to Nick and his staff for helping Cory do field investigations for that. We did release the project for bid, and bids were opened on June 17th, and we had some very favorable numbers come in. Wenshaw and Sons came in as low bid at 317, $703, and we had bidder two was Cagiano and bidder three was C.E. Cox, who you may recall actually did our utility work on mosquito, among other projects as well. Additionally, all of these bids were below the engineer's estimate, so, you know, we performed our analysis of the low bidder's proposal, found everything to be in conformance and good requirements with the public contract code, and we are recommending award of this contract to them. And you also may recall, in 2018, 2019, this was originally adopted with a budget appropriation of $250,000 for the Conrad Street Sewer Main Replacement. However, as time went on, we actually did have to liquidate a portion of that through recommendation from the Measure HL Committee for, from the Measure H Fund to help us carry costs associated with the mosquito road project. And that, that kind of liquidation and reappropriation is what put us in the position to move forward with our construction reserve policy, because we didn't want to be robbing Paul to pay Peter on our projects. So as we move forward into this fiscal year, we knew that this was, was coming, so we actually did a little bit better planning and programming of the funds. And below, or in staff's report, there's a series of tables that identifies the need for funding a $265,129 budget appropriation for Measure L Fund that allows us to carry the total project budget of $530,129. And as such, that will help us carry on the construction contract, as well as fund a recommended construction inspection contract with Dewberry Drake Haglen, who is serving as our in-house inspections team right now. And that contract amount with Dewberry Drake Haglen is $28,829.30. And with that, that concludes staff's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you very much. Another Measure H and L funded project. This is, you know, thanks to our taxpayers for, for willing to put up with some taxes to make this all happen, so thank you for that. Any questions for staff? All right. I'm gonna guess Sue might wanna have something to say about this. I'm gonna open up for public comment.
Measure H, Measure L Committee, and yes, of course, I often may have the comment on this one. This is one that our committee has been hoping to get done for several years now, and much needed to be done, and I'm glad that it has gone out to bid, and we got a good bid, and we can go ahead and do it. It's one of those really terrible, old, shallow steel sewer lines that sits right underneath the asphalt. So you've got the asphalt, as soon as you crack through the asphalt, there's the sewer line. So did it need to be done? Oh, yeah, 'cause if you get heavy enough trucks, our new garbage trucks are pretty heavy, and you're gonna crush that line, and then we'll have another sewer spill, and then we'll have another $10,000 a day to pay for the, to the water board. So this is much better idea to get, just get her done.
Thank you, Sue. Kirk, you in on this one? All right, good. All right, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and bring it back for the council for any further consideration or a motion.
I'll make a motion, but I have one quick question, I forgot. So on this one, do you anticipate having to close like the highway off-ramp at all when we're doing this, or any street closures?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, well, with that, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution approving this project.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, sorry, excuse me. Mayor Thomas?
Aye, thank you. All right. This is what somebody's been waiting for all evening. Hopefully, we are on our good behavior. I was, I was a little nervous having our new attorney sit out, new future attorney sitting out in the audience. You didn't run, so I guess we're doing okay. All right, with that said, this is, the next item is 12.5, and that's adopt a resolution improvement agreement with Chronic, Moskowitz, Moskowitz and Tiedemann and Gerard, Gerard to provide city attorney services to the city of Placerville. And I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is one of those bitter, bittersweet, I think. You talked early about this in January of this year. The city attorney and I spoke, and he told me that it was time for him to retire, and I, and I respect that. We've, we've had a long run, good run with John, and I, for one, I've been here 10 years now with the city, and I want to state that it's, he has supported me and been a great support in, in keeping me going for the last 10 years, so appreciate that. But we, we had that discussion and kinda talked about timing. As you know, in March, we brought a draft RFP to you, which you approved, we put out, and then we received proposals on May 4th of this year. We received seven, we received proposals from seven qualified firms. We received an additional two, unfortunately, that we received late, that we had, we returned unopened. Of those seven, we reviewed those and selected the top. Of those seven, we reviewed those and selected the top four for consideration, and the city council interviewed those. Those were Chronic, Moskovitz, Tiedemann, and Gerard, Jones &amp; Mayer, Cole Huber, and Colatano, Highsmith, and Whately. Those were the four that we interviewed. And as a result of those interviews, we selected the firm of Chronic, Moskovitz, Tiedemann, and Gerard, and specifically Mona Ibrahimie and Andreas Buer. Did I say that right, Andreas? Thank you. As our city attorney and assistant city attorney going forward, I want to emphasize that they also have a lot of other attorneys' expertise in their firm that can help us in many areas where we now contract out for issues that we will probably go directly through their firm, unless there is some reason that we feel that we wouldn't. And there are some cases that are ongoing currently. It's our assumption that we will continue with those as they are until those cases are concluded. Again, we, we went through that process, negotiated the contract, took some direction from the council, and were satisfied that all of those conditions and were met that we were looking for. At this time, we are recommending approval of the contract, and that will take effect on August 10th. We do have an agreement with, with Mona and the firm that they will do some transition work in between now and then, what we work with them on with the city attorney, as well as with some of our other staff, to get up to speed, hopefully, by that date or close to it, and be ready to hit the ground running on, on August 10th. So, with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor, and if you have any questions.
Thank you. We have, just for clarification for the public, we have deliberated this quite a bit in closed session. This was, our interviews were done in closed session, and as a personnel matter, and so we did, so we, and we deliberated the variety of different applicants for this, that applied for this RFP, and, and we came to this conclusion. It was unanimous. There was a lot of consideration given to the others, because they were all well-qualified. I think that, I think the qualifications and the, what do I want to say? Just expertise that you guys are bringing to the table, with you individually and your firm, kind of stood out, and we, we appreciated that level of expertise. And so, I, I just want to kind of put it out there a little bit, because we, unfortunately, it's a process that we did not deliberate in public. And, and it is unfortunate, but it's also, it was, it was also required that we do it that way. So, I don't, I didn't want to leave it set and just see this thing kind of brushed under the rug without actually having just a brief conversation, letting people know that we, there's a lot of consideration with the applicants that we had. Any further comments?
Just quickly, to the same point, I mean, we had really great, we had really great choices, and so it's really a testament to both of you that, you know, you raised above that as well. I mean, we, it was, you know, we had a good conversation, but as the mayor said, I think just your expertise and what the firm brought just kind of rise to a different level, and so we're, you know, we're still not believing John's actually gonna leave us, and I have a feeling we're all gonna be calling him as well on things, you know, as he can be consultant now. But, we're really looking forward to having you onboard. Thank you.
Kind of along those same lines, of course, and I just want to stress how you folks might have to put up with a little bit of us trying to get used to this new transition and become one of the hometown attorneys. But, welcome to the fray, and I think we made a good choice. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, Jackie? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up for public comment. Seeing nobody jump out of their, oop, we have one.
First, I just apologize, the last time I came here, when you had an agenda item for interviewing these folks, because I didn't read the agenda, or I would have figured out it didn't need to be there, that it was closed door, but I'll repeat the same comment, you'll never find another John Driscoll. He knows everybody who's ever worked for the city, as well as now, is just uniquely qualified, and as you can see from the retainer agreement, much cheaper. So, a couple of questions come to mind. Is it the usual practice to be billed for the time you come from your office, door to door? Yes, it's almost $1,000 to be here tonight. What, how does it, is that covered? And then, what's the usual, if, if any one of you have a question, do you call the council? Or will it be one person who's a designated? That's second question. And, let's see, the third one is about potential conflicts of interest, because normally, it's something that's resolved within the firm. Some new client comes in and they figure out if there's a conflict, but the perception that the public may have is much different. So, how do we find out what other parties are represented by this firm that's out of town? Those are the three things that come to mind, otherwise, I'm sure you all did a very diligent job. Thank you.
And thank you for those comments. Those are actually questions that we had ourselves through this whole process, so if you mind touching on just a couple of those, or?
Sure. I think with regard to Kirk's first question about travel time, that's standard practice to charge from your office to wherever you're going. It's not unusual to see that, and I think virtually every one of the proposals that we had also had that in it as well. So, it's, it's not anything unusual.
We're still working out how exactly we're gonna communicate with the attorney. We're gonna fill that out as we go. We don't want, you know, all of us recognize that there's an expense with a phone call. You know, John was easier and easier to access, and we knew how to get ahold of him pretty easily, but at the same time, there was, you know, we got charged for things as they come along, and we've had that conversation with our proposed attorney here as well. So, we're gonna, we're gonna work on that. I think we're all cognizant of being cautious of not abusing that.
And I think Kirk's last question went to conflicts, and I don't want to take it away, because I think that Ms. Ibrahimie can answer that, or Andreas as well, but I know that they'd run conflicts checks on issues that come up. One of the nice things about dealing with a firm like their firm is that they don't do a lot of private clients, if you will, a lot of public entities, that sort of thing, so that reduces the amount of potential that might be for conflicts. But, I think that Mona can address that probably even better than I can at this point.
Thank you. I wanted to give you an opportunity to address as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. It's my honor and pleasure to be here today with my colleague, Andreas Buher. We are honored that you selected Chronic to represent the city of Placerville. We know we have huge shoes to fill, and we will work diligently. Just to answer a couple of the questions that have come up, I'll work backwards. With respect to conflicts of interest, we do have in-house protocol where every new matter is run through a conflicts check, because we have rules of professional responsibility that we have to be accountable to, and we will not represent competing clients that would be adverse, for example, to Placerville. The second matter, we are not billing for our time today. This is for our benefit, so, to answer that second question. And the first question about travel time, we have proposed a range of ways to serve this community, and we've also learned through the pandemic that in-person meetings are not always necessary. Sometimes they're beneficial, but we can meet with staff virtually, Zoom, phone calls. Clients have great access to me calling my cellphone and so forth, and so we are very mindful that this new legal services agreement is a deviation from the city's existing contractual operation with Mr. Driscoll, and we intend on managing costs as best as we can.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments and follow-up. With that, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council for a motion, and?
I just, first, I just want to say, welcome aboard, Mona Andres. We're really looking forward to working with you, and I'll make that motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye, thank you. All right, moving on. Item 13, we, it's kind of a slow month this month. We don't have a lot of meetings, but we did, did we have a, a?
No, we canceled transit authority.
Laughco is what I'm thinking.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yes.
So, Laughco, we approved a contract for MSRs for small and medium water agencies in El Dorado County, and Jose resigned, and we appointed Erica the standing executive officer.
And you're on the search for a new one.
Yeah, we'll, they'll be putting those applications out, yeah.
I was wondering if we should, if it might behoove us to send something to Jose. He's been with us for so long, and all of us know him and have worked with him, and I just think it would be nice to get some kind of a letter or something from the city.
Yeah, I agree.
He has been a great resource for us, and we've used him along the way a few times, so, yeah.
Right.
All right, Pioneer Community?
Meet this Thursday. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Thursday is our next meeting.
All right. And Plus, Fire Safe Council?
Not, not anything more than, but I will say this, that the Fire Safe Council has made arrangements, and we're gonna be at the National Night Out, a lot of the neighborhoods, and they're gonna be giving out information, and, yeah, I think it's a really good thing.
All right. And future, moving on to item number 14, future agenda items.
I want to suggest a future agenda item, and that's just for planning to review our bed and breakfast establishment. It seems like it's 40 years old, and just to kind of review that, as we're also doing the Airbnb, so we can kind of look at everything at once.
I concur.
Is that a, is that a, is, so you said it's kind of 40 years old? Is it really? Is that a thing?
He said 81.
Yeah, the ordinance was adopted in 1981. Okay. And is that part of the Airbnb process already, or is, no?
The city council did adopt a resolution of intent to amend the zoning code with respect to short-term vacation rentals. However, we will be looking at our various definitions of housing, and we will also look at the interface between short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts, as I mentioned earlier during the 11.1 agenda item, to ensure that there's a clear differentiation between the two. I think there's now interpretation as individuals really seeking hard to establish a short-term rental, they're looking at the bed and breakfast ordinance as an avenue to establish a short-term rental. So, we're gonna look at making sure there's a clear, clear definitions that differentiate between the two. So, we would bring those together under the draft, short-term rental.
So, it's just gonna be in with that, what you're doing already?
Correct.
Okay, great. So, is there a need to put, add that to a future agenda items, or is that just gonna be part of it?
I just wanted to be clear from the earlier agenda item, because that wasn't the appropriate place to talk about it.
Okay, excellent, good. So, no need to do that, but it's there. Okay, good, thank you. All right, any further future agenda items? Seeing none. Receive and file please, statistics? Statistics?
Statistics.
Statistics? Sorry, Regina. I'm not drinking yet. For the month of June. And is there any, is there any highlights there, chief, that you'd like to give us?
Okay. If you follow some of our social media and, or some of the stuff in our local media, we've been very fortunate in coming to successful conclusions on some serious felony incidents, so our guys and gals are doing a fantastic job.
Right.
So, they're managing the workload without any significant issues, and they're also doing what the community expects, which is keeping them safe and holding law violators accountable.
Nicely done. Thank you. Chief Cordero, you have statistics, there are statistics there, that, but do we want to, is there something you could add to the conversation, just a little bit about what's going on in the fire service and what you're seeing that's not really spelled out in the statistics?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yes, with our stats that I provided for this month, there was a little bit of a change. I included also a comparison with Station 25 with the rest of our district, to give you that overall view and showing the workload that Station 25 does provide with the city of Placerville. Our call volume continues to, to increase, and unfortunately, we have had quite a few fires over the last month, this last few days in particular, throughout the county. The, the kind of ongoing concern, if you will, is with the drought that we currently are undergoing statewide and on the West Coast, but also kind of an ongoing shortage with, with fire personnel and available personnel. As one of the op area coordinators for OES, you know, part of my duties is to, is to fill those outside requests to large campaign fires and things like that, and, and just seeing this type, this time of year, typically, when the requests for overhead and things like that come in, agencies throughout our region will swoop those orders up as everybody's kind of in quarters and ready to go. It's a bit alarming to me to see the number of UTS, which is unable to fill, that are being returned back to region on a lot of these overhead requests, as well as strike team requests and things of that nature. It is, you know, we're short-staffed on, not just our agency, but, but across the fire service in the state of California, as well as the Forest Service. You know, they're, they're equally having challenges with staffing, all of their resources, and so there is a bit of a shortage. Our crews are very aware, and, you know, they're, you know, tightened up their boots and ready for the season that's ahead of them, knowing that, you know, the typical resources that we do have, they may not get this summer, so hopefully, you know, at this, the end of this fire season, we can report back that we navigated it successfully and safely for all our crews, but there is definitely a challenge ahead of us over the next few months.
Wow, thank you. I have a son-in-law, a future son-in-law that's Cal Fire up at Jarboe Gap, and then, of course, my son does work for County Fire, and it's, I've heard similar, similar comments in staffing and, and what their expectations, and that little voice in everybody's head saying it's looking kind of scary this year.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
So, is the main issue, is it, it's a monetary compensation, why they're not able to, because we keep hearing this, and in fact, our Fire Safe Council was gonna write a letter to the governor, asking, you know, that he consider, I don't know how much good that does, or if we should, I mean, even like coming from us, how you feel about it?
There's, there's definitely a concern with the US Forest Service and their firefighters and their pay and benefit package that inhibits them to attract a lot of folks. The overall shortage of firefighters across the state and people wanting to do that, we're all kind of scratching our head, you know, pointing at things such as COVID and, and, you know, the recent recession, and, and, you know, the hiring of a lot of the agencies. But, it's, it's hard for us to actually pinpoint, you know, there's always the generational concerns of, of, you know, is this a job that a lot of the, you know, folks that are coming out of high school and college really want to do anymore? It's a blue-collar job. There's a lot of variables, and if I could pinpoint it, I'd probably write a book and go on, on circuit with it, but it's definitely a challenge.
I wasn't sure whether, you know, I knew it was forestry, you know, but I didn't know if the local, if it was the same situation, so.
We suffer from that locally up here as well, as, you know, we're, our proximity to the Sacramento Valley and the Bay Area, you know, we clearly don't compete with those, those ranges.
Unfortunately, people can go down to San Francisco and all over the Bay Area and make 50% and more, up to double what they're making up here. So, it's a, you know, a lot of, you know, I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of our firefighters, and the ones that do live locally, they have a real commitment to our community, and it's, and I truly appreciate them being here, their families here, and they stay here and serve our community, and that's a, that's a great tribute to them, and I really appreciate what they do there, so if you could pass that along, that'd be great as well from the council.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you. With that, I think I put my agenda away. I'm already ready to go now. Is there anything left on the agenda?
City manager and staff reports?
City manager's report. I'm getting ready to pack up here. Request, okay, upcoming items?
Wait a minute, go back to city manager and staff reports?
We did.
I just, I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, that's coming, what are those? Okay, city manager, yes.
Okay, I've talked to Cleve about this earlier, but I would like him to comment, because I've had a couple of people question me about the condition of our redwood tree at?
Our Christmas tree?
Our Christmas tree, and because we're seeing some dead branches, and folks are wondering, is it dying or whatever? And Cleve had a really good report, and I thought he could share that.
So, as you know, our, let's see, Terry's not here tonight, but our monument garden is under construction currently, and-
And the, the landscape architect who is working on that, Kerry? Frye, thank you, thank you, Nick. Kerry Frye. He had that, and an arborist had stopped by. I don't know if he called him, or he just stopped by to look at it and talk about it. And the arborist initial was, yeah, I've heard this is stressed and having problems. And, and so they started talking about, started looking at the tree. And the result was, they said, no, it actually looks like it's in good, healthy condition. There are a couple of broken branches that are up in the tree that are dead, and that's what makes it look bad. And those need to be cleaned out, so there's some work that can be done there. But they said overall, it looks like it's in a, still in a healthy condition. And with what we're doing in adding the irrigation for the new Monument Garden, we'll add additional, you know, water to help that, that tree there. And so his opinion was that it is still in good, healthy condition going forward, so.
So trees aren't supposed to be perfectly shaped in nature, huh?
Well, if you look at it about nature, they're, they're not. There's some that are.
If you look at the top of that tree, you know that it's.
I think we put the hurt on it over the years, so.
Anyway, I thought that was a great report, and I was happy to hear it.
Thank you for bringing that up. We have item number 16, upcoming items, and there's a long list there. You can view those online if you like. And item number 17 is adjournment, and I'm going to say for the last time in a meeting, goodbye to Mr. Driscoll. Farewell. Thank you. Yes, you will be missed, and welcome as well.
Exactly. And we're missing our next meeting.
Yes. Yes, our, our next meeting will be August 10th. We are skipping our, we did that in consent calendar. We might talk about that a little bit, but we will be canceling our second meeting of the month of July, and our next meeting is August 10th. We'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you.